All right, great. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, August 8th. This is the planning board meeting for the town of Norfolk. We are here in room 124 Town Hall. I won't go through all the details, but this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on YouTube. And there are several of you that are joining us via Zoom. The meeting is posted on the town's website with all the links to access it via Zoom. Since we do have two of our board members remote tonight, we will be doing all votes via roll call. So let's first do some introductions. So we have remote. We have Chris Motford. If you could just raise your hand or just, there you go. Eric Diamond. Excellent. And then we have Gary Sullivan, myself, Chad Peck, Melissa Mayo, and our town planner, Rich McCarthy. So we will go right into our seven o'clock appointment, which is the Master Plan Steering Committee. So I will let you take it away, introduce yourself, and we'll get started.
Great. And Rich, you've got the slides up. Awesome. Next slide, please. Angle myself so I can see. So my name is Jeff Davis, and I'm with the Horstley Witten Group. We are a consultant team that is based in Sandwich, Massachusetts. I am in our Providence, Rhode Island office, and we are providing free technical assistance to the town of Norfolk. Norfolk, we're not in Virginia, through the MBTA Communities Technical Assistance Program at the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. Next slide, please. Oh. Prior to that.
You don't want that. What? I think you gotta download and open that.
Oh, there it is.
Scroll down. Scroll down.
There you go. Yes, next slide, please. So just as a quick reminder, and I'll be brief with the background information. Of course Norfolk has targets under the state law to meet under the MBTA Communities Act. First of all, minimum multifamily housing unit capacity of 750 units, a minimum land area of 50 acres, a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, and that is true for all the communities across the Commonwealth. And then you have to have at least 40% of both the district area and the unit capacity within a half mile radius of your transit station, the MBTA station here in town. And of course, your compliance deadline is December 31st, 2024. So very briefly, when we first met with the town, we were instructed to explore two different areas that might be amenable for multifamily housing by right. So we looked in this area, the B1 out district surrounding the MBTA station. Next slide. As well as a couple areas in the Pondville district. So we analyzed those borders. And next slide, please. Came up with the following results in our first test of the state's compliance model. So it took all three of those areas, the area here around the center, plus those two sections of Pondville. And altogether, that equaled 213 and a half acres, which of course more than met your 50 acre minimum. You had a modeled unit capacity of 2,460, again, well over the 750 units required. You also easily met your station area and your unit capacity within the, within the station area, the land area within the station area. However, the one target where you fell short was in the residential density. The dwelling units per acre was about 12 versus the 15 that was required by state law. Next slide, please. So at that point, that was when I came back to you in May, and we discussed the results. And we had a good discussion, and this body provided some guidance for going back to the drawing board and making some adjustments. Basically, at the time, we said there are two major approaches. You could, one, reduce the area, the land area of these districts in order to increase the density that way, or you could keep a larger area and just increase the allowable density within that area. And this body decided that your preferred approach would be reducing that land area. So based on that conversation specifically, we were asked to remove the C1 on-highway district so that that district could continue to primarily support commercial development. We were also asked to remove as much of the B1 core district as possible because we had included some of that core area in your town center so that that can also continue to primarily support commercial and mixed-use development. And as a reminder for anyone in the audience who's not familiar, the MBTA Communities law requires that you're allowing multifamily housing alone by right. So you cannot require ground floor commercial uses. Next, remove residentially zoned properties with existing single-family home uses. And finally, remove entirely the Pondville A portion of the proposed district. Next slide, please. So in a meeting with town staff, we went a little bit farther on our analysis. And there are these two town-owned properties, the playing fields behind the Freeman Kennedy School, and there's also a wooded area east of Boyd's Crossing. And town staff determined that, you know what? It's unlikely that either of these properties would ever be used for development of housing. So why don't we eliminate them as well? So we did. Next slide, please. So based on that, we redrew the districts. So you can see here in Norfolk Center that we have removed the B1 core district area and also the parcels with existing single-family homes. And we removed the two town-owned parcels that I just described. And this is the new area. And you'll notice that there is a small non-contiguous portion to the north of the tracks, and that is fine. It meets the minimum five acre requirement, so long as you have a core contiguous area. You can have smaller areas as long as they're at least five acres in size, and this does hit that target. Next slide. In the Pondville area, again, we removed the original Pondville A district. That was that district around Sharon Avenue. And we also removed the C1 on-highway district, and this area outlined in orange is what remains. Next slide, please. So based on this new geography, we reran the numbers. And I'll go very quickly through these two slides. Really, there are only two significant points to make on these slides, or three, really. One, that we were able to continue to maintain all the existing zoning standards within the B1 out zoning district here and still meet the targets. The only two things that changed, one, which was always the case, we have to allow multifamily by right. And two, the last time we came to you, we had proposed a residential density of 16 dwelling units per acre. In order to hit your target with this new geography, that had to be bumped up to 18 dwelling units per acre. So only a slight increase in that proposed density. Next slide, please. And you'll see all the other dimensional requirements, yard setbacks, building footprint, residential buffer, parking. Everything else has remained the same. It was really only that tweak to the residential density that was made. Next slide, please. So same thing for the Pondville district. Almost exactly, we were able to keep all the C1 off-highway standards, zoning standards for this area. Again, multifamily must be allowed by right. And the only additional change we made from the last time we were here was increasing the proposed density from 16 dwelling units per acre to 18 dwelling units per acre. And you can just skip ahead to the next slide. So again, all those remain the same. Wanted to make a quick point about inclusionary zoning. So the last time we were here, we noted that the MBTA Communities requires no more than 10% of units can be affordable at no less than 80% of the area median income. The town currently has inclusionary zoning that ranges from 10 to 20%, depending on the number of units in the development. That does require a special permit, and it applies to projects of six units or more. So last time I was here, we had proposed amending that to be in, in compliance with the 10% of units at no less than 80% of the area median income. But the preference of the planning board was to go ahead. You have an option of proposing an economic feasibility analysis to petition the state to allow you to maintain your existing inclusionary zoning policy. So that is the direction that we are expecting the town to take. Next slide, please. So testing the compliance model try two. So again, everything remaining the same, except we changed the geography. We slightly changed that residential density from 16 units per acre to 18 units per acre. And here's what we get. A new district area of just over 80 acres, again, well over the 15 acres, 50 acres that are required. You have a modeled unit capacity of 1,155 units, again, well within your target. This time, your dwelling units per acre does hit that average of 15.2. So you do hit the 15 units per acre that's required by the state. And I will make one caveat, again, particularly for anyone who may be listening in the audience who is not familiar. Say, well, the requirement is 15 units per acre, and you just said that we set the, the density at 18 units per acre. Of course, there are other things that play a factor into the ultimate density of a project, including the amount of parking that you require, including the setbacks and so on and so forth. The building area that you're allowed on a lot. So all of those things combined tend to reduce the actual residential density a bit. So even though 18 is the requirement, once you factor all these other things in, you hit that 15.2 units per acre. And still, you are well within your station area targets for both the land area and the unit capacity. So it looks to us like this hits the mark. And again, we hope that this hits the mark in a way that is, causes least disruption to you as possible and maintains as much of your existing zoning as possible. Next slide, please. So lastly, in terms of next steps, as a reminder, prior to December 31st, 2024, the town will need to amend its zoning by law to be consistent with the MBTA Communities law. And what we're recommending is that the town adopt a zoning overlay district that covers the parcels in the maps, the redrawn maps that were shown earlier. And we think this can be a very, very simple zoning overlay, since almost all of your underlying zoning is remaining the same. All you would have to do is say, within this overlay, multifamily residential is allowed by right, and such uses, she'll be allowed at least 18 dwelling units per acre. And that should cover all your bases and meet the state's requirements. Next slide, please. So assuming the town is successful in using an EFA to justify its existing inclusionary zoning policies, you're good. You should be done. I will say there has not been very clear guidance, even now, three months later. I think it's been since I was here last. There was some initial guidance released. There's still a lot of confusion over what the state would accept for, for an EFA. But I don't, Richard, did you end up applying for additional grant funding to?
We, we have not yet.
Okay. Because I know that that's still an option. And you know what? It's probably best to let other communities be the guinea pig on this. And then once you see what's been approved and what's allowable, to follow that pattern. I don't expect it's going to be a very heavy lift. But if for whatever reason, you know, time is running short, and there still hasn't been an answer from the state, I think you can still pass this overlay district and just slightly amend your existing inclusionary zoning only within the overlay zone and leave it intact for where it applies elsewhere in town. And with that, I will stop talking and see if anyone has any questions.
So regarding the next steps, are, I know you put in there the highlights of what needs to happen. I wasn't sure, are you going to be working with Rich to outline the exact language that we need to identify? Or is it just up to us as the planning board and Rich to?
So that is outside the scope of this particular technical assistance. I'd be happy to work with Rich to, you know, contract with you further. But in terms of what MHP is providing this.
I mean, I think we can handle. I just wanted to understand what the scope of this project was. That's fine.
And honestly, this should be, this may be the simplest of all the communities I'm working with. Hopefully.
It looks pretty straightforward. So I mean, as far as what I saw, that you took all the comments we had, integrated those, readjusted the zones, which is what, the numbers kind of came back as what we had hoped.
Yeah, okay, good.
So I didn't have any other comments. Did you? Eric and, hold on, Aaron. Eric and Chris, did you have anything remote?
No, I'm good on myself. Thank you.
Okay. We do have one question from the audience. Aaron.
It looked like we're left with 80 acres. Is there a reason that's 80 and not 50 or?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
It looks like we've got 80 acres proposed across those two areas, right?
Correct.
You know, minimum of 50, is there a reason we're exceeding the 50 or?
The larger you make the area, the, it's partly a density issue, right? Like if you eliminated the Pondville area, you'd have to increase the density downtown in order to hit your density requirements. And by having Pondville, having a slightly larger than 50 acre area, it allows you to spread things out a little bit. But certainly, if you want, if you want to, I think you probably get away with just, just targeting this around town center.
Eric, did that answer your question?
Right, yeah, it's not a requirement, but it can be discussed.
No, it's not a requirement.
Okay. All right, we do have a question from one of our members of the master plan, Aaron.
Aaron Hunt, Master Plan Committee. A couple of quick questions, and if they were answered in the previous meeting, just tell me to go watch the video. The overlay district itself has, it's not a comprehensive area that's identified within, well, at least I'm not saying that right. The area that was studied identifies specific sites. The overlay district would be not the entire area, but the specific sites that are identified. All right. And then, I guess just a clarification question. There are, the striped areas are the areas that are included or excluded?
Thank you. I did not mention that in this presentation. So the green striped areas are areas that the state considers excluded. And excluded lands are generally because of environmental issues or because they're publicly owned land that we don't expect will be developed as housing.
Thank you. If you could go to, I think it was slide 19.
I think that's the last.
Sorry, 18. All right, so understood on the previous slide, there were the two recommendations. How do these two bullet points tie into those two recommendations?
So this is related to inclusionary zoning specifically. So I think you can move forward with the overlay zone as we've described. In order for the state to approve your existing inclusionary zoning, they're requiring that municipalities conduct an economic feasibility analysis, basically to say that your existing inclusionary zoning is not going to, serves as a deterrent for people to build housing in these areas. It's still uncertain precisely what proof the state is looking for to show that, to demonstrate that. So all this is saying is, if you're able to submit this analysis and the state accepts it, you're good. If you're, if you're finding that, oh gosh, December 2024 is looming, and we still don't have an answer on this, you could change the inclusionary zoning regulations only within the overlay district to be capped at that 10% rather than that scale of 10 to 20% that you have elsewhere now.
All right, I'm just going to put that in my words. So we currently have two bullet points that we need to hit. If we apply for the EFA and it's accepted, that's it. If we apply for the EFA and it's not accepted, it would be four bullet points, these two included.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, that was actually really good clarification. Aaron, thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the room on Zoom? I see no hands, so.
I'm not as optimistic as Jeff on the economic feasibility analysis. Just, I know it's good to have optimism, but unless you've got more information based on what I've seen.
The only information I have is that I don't think, well, I don't think the state has very clear criteria for when they could say yes versus no, which makes me feel like most communities that go through the effort, they're going to have to say yes to unless they come up with something, which I have not seen.
So was your, is your recommendation to file this sooner than later? I mean, should we get this in now as soon as possible since it's? Or should we wait to see if, you know, has other towns submit and what the responses are from the state?
I think you have a little bit of time. I mean, particularly because I think the drafting of the overlay district text should be pretty straightforward. I think you can wait a few months and see how this economic feasibility analysis issue shakes out. And again, if you're getting nervous and you're realizing you're, you know, you're hitting your deadline for the docket for a town meeting. The other thing some communities are doing are just like spending a lot of money to hire a fancy economic development firm to go over the top and provide something that's probably way more than the state will ultimately require of towns. But then you know they're going to approve it because it's all the bells and whistles, right? So there are, I do know some communities that are saying, you know what? We're going to ask for a grant from the state. We're gonna spend the whole $30,000 on this economic feasibility analysis. Why not? The state's paying for it. And, you know, but I would guess that at the end of the day, they're going to come back with very scaled back requirements that are not going to be that elaborate. That's my guess.
Time will tell.
Yes, time will tell.
Aaron had another question.
Just, I guess a question to the board. Why would the town go through the effort of the EFA to not adopt these two bullet points?
Well, I believe last time we talked about this, the reason that we needed to go through that process was because we were thinking we would need to have 20%, not 10% to have any hope of reaching our affordable numbers in our lifetimes. So that's what we were thinking, and I believe that's what then prompted you to say we would probably have to do that analysis. Is that correct?
Exactly. Yeah, so what I heard last time was that there was just a desire to see a greater level of affordability within these areas.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're in a, I mean, if the requirements are no more than 10%. I mean, our current bylaws actually exceed that, so.
Right.
We need to, we need to deal with that issue.
To Rich's point, when we were doing this work for B1, we didn't go through a formal EFA, but MEPC did give us numbers that kind of showed us that anything over 10% was not economically viable. No developer would build it. Just, just a fair warning.
Okay.
Which leads me to a follow-up question, which is, do we know the logic behind the 10% max requirement of affordable housing?
So housing advocates at the state have said, basically that same argument, that if it's more than 10%, it becomes burdensome for developers, and they might be disinclined to develop residential-only properties with that, without a significant subsidy. And so the thought was that 10% was reasonable. Most, most developments can absorb that. But beyond that, unless you have like a really strong housing market, it could be burdensome. I know, I know. It was AB hard-pressed to find a municipality in Massachusetts that doesn't have a strong enough housing market to absorb more than 10% affordable housing, but what do I know?
Andrea has her hand up.
Yep. Andrea, on Zoom, you have your hand up?
Yes, hi, everyone. I can't help but chime in here, even though it's not technically an agenda item yet. I just wanted to give a little background on what we're doing at the housing team at MEPC. So we're working on the EFA analyses. Right now, we're focused on the rapid transit communities, but our financial feasibility folks are trying to modify our pro forma to help kind of answer the questions. As he mentioned, it is a lot of nebulous guidelines that we're getting from the state, but we feel pretty confident that our pro forma and our methodology does work. So we are hoping that we can maybe have some like positive test cases that y'all can use from our RTC work since the 23 deadline is right around the corner. And those will be getting submitted and reviewed by EOHLC. And so I think that it would be good to kind of wait and see what those look like. But we're happy to continue to talk about this and maybe. But we're happy to continue to talk about this and maybe MAPC can have a separate conversation. I know we've been emailing back and forth with Rich to try to get something set up. So just know that we're kind of an additional resource in this area.
That's great, thank you for that, and that's so true. MAPC has been really helpful with other communities in, you know, navigating this. And I, I agree, I think someone else is going to figure this out soon and it doesn't have to be you. It'll probably be a much less of a headache to wait until those guidelines are in place.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Great, thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'll be back with the select board next week.
Yes.
Okay.
Rivening, Kevin.
Select board did want to hear this. What do you mean? You're eagerly waiting for this.
Just Kevin gets here twice since he's on this committee.
Well, I mean, that's the beauty of being on both.
So he'll be processing in the background over the next, until the next meeting and.
And we'll have those hard-hitting.
Right, right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, so who do we have up? Do we have Josh?
Josh.
Or is it Andrea?
So I turn the power over to Josh, Andrea, who's.
Good evening, everyone. If, Rich, if you could give me the share of the screen power, I will do so. That's great.
I bestowed the power onto you.
Thank you all. And, and thank you to Rich for giving us a Zoom reprieve this evening and allowing us to not be there in person. So we wish, we wish we could, but it's also nice to cool our mileage for, for an evening and we'll be back with you probably in September for sure. So let me get my screen here shared. So we have, as you might expect, a few moving parts that we'd like to walk you through this evening and kind of give you a preview of all, all those pieces and also a preview of what's ahead in the fall, just to make sure we're all on the same page. I would say things from our perspective are progressing very well. The, we're effectively a pivot point between phase one of the work and phase two, where we're trying our best, our full team, basically to take a look at all of the information which we've been receiving and analyzing and get that packaged up for the committee to review and pivoting toward now kind of moving from a listening mode more into a talking mode where we start to pivot toward the definition of goals for the different topics as well. So for all of those moving parts this evening, here's what we have. We're gonna walk through some of the survey findings in more detail, talk about the last forum which we held, which some of you were at for small businesses back in June, and then preview for you some key takeaways from the existing conditions analysis, which you have not seen as much of yet, but has been occurring in the background. And then talk again, just touch briefly on the vision statement and the inputs which are going into that draft statement. And then, as I said, preview and look forward to the fall so that we can anticipate what's headed our way. Again, thank you for all the master plan steering committee members and ambassadors who are part of this process. We cannot do this without you and we appreciate all of your time and volunteer hours, both in our committee meetings and outside activities. And that will be occurring again in the fall, where we're asking some activities of you as well. Our team, you see Andrea and I most frequently, but we're all working on various aspects of this plan and continue to do so. And they've been great to work with internally at our office. You'll see more of the full team at some events in the fall as we look toward that. I'm gonna pass it over to Andrea, who will walk us through the survey findings, which I think are super exciting and the numbers which we received are pretty outstanding. So I'll let Andrea take that away.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. Hi, everyone. It has been really fun to go through the survey findings. We are a lot of survey nerds on the team, and so it's been really fun to see the good participation and also to hear from the different comments and feedback directly from folks that took the survey. So we got over 1,000, we just barely surpassed 1,000 responses. We had, of course, the majority that were done online, but we did have some folks do paper versions of the survey and the town was great to get those over to us. And it's pretty cool that if you look at participation on the voter roll, we ended up reaching one out of every eight voters. So that's pretty good participation and we'll kind of talk through who we heard from in a little more detail. So we got a little bit more diversity when you look at the age of participants through the survey. That's probably not surprising. A survey is something that you can do on your own time. It's a little more accessible if you can attend a forum or a different meeting. We did hear from about 9% of folks under the age of 34, between 25 and 34. We still aren't hearing from kind of those young adults, 19 to 24. The biggest share continues to be the 35 to 49 age range, and then it kind of levels out as you get older. We asked a question about race and ethnicity to try to continue to track different factors and demographics of those participating in the process. And not surprising, about 83% identify as white. We did have about 50 people of color who participated and about 10% decided not to answer this question. All of the demographic questions are optional. It's just a way for us to track participation. We are continuing to not hear from a ton of households that are earning less than $100,000. Only about 7% identified in that way when taking the survey. We did hear from a really big share of households with children under 18, over 400. And again, we're still not hearing from renters too much yet. So about 96% of folks identify as renter or homeowners. We have really good geographic representation of folks taking the survey. So you can see here that about a quarter in each precinct, a little lower in precinct one, which makes sense. I think there's a little less residential in that area. We also asked how long have folks lived in Norfolk? And you can see here, this is actually a really good mix too. So about half either lived here less than five years or below 10 years, six to 10 years. We had about a quarter of respondents who've been residents for over 20 years. So it's a pretty good mix of, you know, people who've lived in Norfolk over different periods of time and have seen change over time in the town. We asked if people had participated in any of our master plan events, since we had had the kickoff forum and then we had some of our small focus forums and we did the community tabling. And so actually about 80% had not participated in any of those events. So I think the survey was a really useful tool in reaching people who weren't engaging in some of the other activities that we planned. We also asked, you know, how can people get involved in the process? In what ways do they want to participate? And about 41% prefer having a virtual participation option. It's really great since the town has this really robust hybrid technology that we can continue to offer virtual participation pretty easily. And then we also learned that Facebook was a really effective way of advertising for the survey. So a little over half heard about the survey through Facebook. So we asked some kind of broad questions to get a sense for challenges and opportunities. And it's probably not surprising that we're continuing to hear some of the same feedback. The top three challenges that folks noted are continuing to manage growth and change, looking to attract new investment and development, and then, of course, wanting to expand town amenities, and that includes a variety of things. Whenever we get into these questions, the survey allowed for people to check in other box and submit write-in comments. And it was really interesting to read through all of those comments and you start to kind of see some additional themes that pop up. In this particular case, a lot of folks mentioned about taxes, economic development, which I think is tied to that new investment and development challenge, and then just development in general. We also asked, you know, where in Norfolk are there opportunities to grow geographically? And so this map shows how people responded. I think it's probably not too surprising that folks mostly said town center or the southern area. There's also, you know, a lot of interest in, not a lot, about 10% interest growing around River's Edge, less so around the Buckley and Mann area. Throughout the presentation that we'll go over, we tried to pull out some different quotes from the survey responses because we did get a lot of really robust qualitative feedback. And so people were really thoughtful in the suggestions that they were making. And I think that a lot of this will feed into the next stage that Josh mentioned of thinking about goals and eventual strategies. So in this question in particular, people have some really specific ideas about what opportunities for growth or changes could occur. Things like thinking about expanding single-family housing choices to maybe two-family conversions or accessory dwelling units, and then some specific comments about how growth could occur in town center. When we asked about opportunities, this again is similar to what we were hearing in some of our other in-person events, but there continues to be a really big interest and desire for more commercial investments so that people can stay in Norfolk to do, you know, a lot of their local services. A lot of folks really want community events to expand and have more public amenities like parks and sidewalks. Sidewalks, again, is a theme that we'll continue to see. I think it's interesting, these top three opportunities, they all kind of tie together and it's getting people out of their house, kind of in the community and having more of a community feel. A lot of the written comments continue to be about grocery stores. That's a big theme. We continue to hear that Norfolk residents want a grocery store in town and economic development. So we asked a question to help us continue to refine our vision and asked, you know, how, what attracted you to live in Norfolk? About half said the small town and some of rural feel. Schools was something that attracted folks and then also just the quality of housing and neighborhoods. It was interesting, the written comments in this regard. People noted that it was maybe affordable when they moved here, but that it's no longer affordable. And then also in the comments, we saw a lot that people were drawn by the proximity to Boston via the commuter rail. We asked what are the top five assets? And again, a lot of overlap. People said homes and neighborhoods, schools, the sense of community, which I think again ties back to the desire for more community events, ways to gather out in public, and then the proximity to Boston and Providence and the many really great open spaces that are in town. So we also asked what words describe Norfolk today? This is something that can really help us to build the vision statement. So the word count, you can see town, small town, that was one of the most popular responses. Community, quiet, quaint, those are all words that help us really understand where Norfolk is today and where it might go in the future. And then Josh will go over the survey results a little bit more by topic, but we think it's important to note the top challenge by topic. And some of these, you can see, were really majority selections. So transportation, people really are desiring more opportunities for walking and improved sidewalks. Under lean use, economic development and housing. Again, people want to see town center being, you know, an investment area, having public and private investment there. Under community facilities and services, the schools continue to be the biggest need and want for the community to maintain that good school system. Open space, recreation and sustainability. Folks really want to be able to access the conservation lands and have more abilities to utilize those. Historical and cultural resources, there is a bigger desire for cultural events. Additional cultural events to tie residents to the history and culture of Norfolk. And then community health, again tying to that, the need for more walking options and better sidewalks. About half of folks said that they want to have a better opportunity for active lifestyles. So that was some of the survey results. We'll get kind of into more of them as we go into the existing conditions because they really tie to some of the work that the team has been doing to understand the data and other aspects of the town. But we did want to talk about the small business forum that we held, since we didn't meet in July with you all. We held this at the end of June and it was really great. We had nine business owners. The Small Business Association was really great to work with and they were super helpful in planning the event and helping get the word out. Thanks to those of you who attended from, who are on this call. It ended up being kind of a small group discussion where we all, we had a small enough group that we could all just talk and we met at the Grange and had just a really great kind of free-flowing conversation. We learned that, you know, there are a lot of home-based businesses in town. And so while a lot of people, I think, were kind of surprised at that over 300 number for businesses in town, a lot of those are home-based businesses. And what this conversation really told us is that those home-based businesses, there may be home-based businesses because it's hard to find commercial spaces outside of their home because there are limited commercial opportunities in town. Maybe they're too expensive, maybe they just don't really meet the needs for the space, the space needs that the businesses have. But some of the business owners have some really interesting ideas about, you know, how can they come together to, you know, do a co-op or incubator kind of style to maximize resources and cut down on costs? This was also, you know, shared in the context of this kind of limits their expansion opportunities if they have to remain a home-based business. So it was really helpful to hear that. We also heard some of the challenges around just promoting business up to the community at large. And a lot of the conversation focused on really good opportunities to continue partnering with the town on business issues. The work that y'all have been doing to improve the signage bylaw came up and, you know, it was really nice for us to just hear that the Small Business Association is a really great asset that we want to continue to engage in this process. So we learned a lot more about the business aspect of Norfolk through this conversation. We also got an opportunity to do.
Lost Andrea. Andrew's coming back, right? Audio?
We lost audio.
Yeah, I think we can't hear them.
Can you hear us now, Rich?
Yep, yep. Yeah.
All right, you're good.
Okay, thanks. I hope that I didn't cut out like five slides ago.
Nope.
So I was just talking about the, the small, the Small Business Association. They host a discovery day at Town Hill and that can be another opportunity for us to just raise awareness about the planning process. And so I think we might talk a little bit about that as an opportunity later on in the presentation. But then we also would really like to convene and meet with this group again in the fall to kind of talk through goals and strategies with this group because they had a lot of great ideas and we see them as a great group for us to continue to engage with through the process. So I'll turn over to Josh.
Thank you, Andrea. So we'll, I'm gonna preview a little bit the existing conditions review, which has been a sort of parallel process in addition to gathering all of the great feedback from the community. One thing I'll note about the, the survey and sort of forums is the work in front of us for that all. We have, obviously, as you've seen, compiled individual results for, say, the survey or individual forums, but we really want to collectively compile all of the individual events and the survey together so that we can see patterns across each of those and better equip ourselves to have those really influence properly the vision statement, which we're continuing to refine, and the initial ideas for goals in the various topic areas. So that's on our plate still, that sort of full compilation of the collective feedback we've gathered over the previous months. But what, what I would note is really wonderful about where we're at is the solid foundation we can now rely on. Where you saw some of those numbers, where 692 people were saying such and such a response. That's a very reliable foundation for us to build on for these recommendations. So we, we will reference those types of numbers to show the depth of the community that's been reached and is behind those ideas. So on the existing conditions, we're continuing to round out our highlighting of issues and themes so that we can then, in the next phase, turn toward coupling those with solutions, which will be moving into that central box in short order as we turn toward the fall. In this case, we're focused on those nine items in the various master plan topics. A lot of people don't think about a community in these ways, but this is a more technical way to organize the information, of course. A lot of topics people think about that have, they responded to in the survey don't fit neatly in one of these boxes. So we're also thinking about the way that these collaborate and sort of cross-cut across these topic areas. But starting with economic development, and we've just pulled together a few overarching conclusions from the research, our, our work in this regard is to pull, continue to pull all this information together in more sort of bite-sized summaries, which the committee will receive and can review and provide us feedback with. And so we're working on that now. And just to, to preview, our ambition is to get you that to the committee prior to our meeting in September so that we can have a more in-depth conversation around the topics in September. In this meeting, we want to talk to you a little bit about what that might look like. But just to get through some of these initial thoughts first, around economic development, the, the data shows residents are relatively affluent. Few people both live and work in Norfolk. Few people both live and work in Norfolk. There's in general higher commuting times for those who are leaving the town than the state averages. And there's generally a lack of amenities and services from a data standpoint and from a tax standpoint. And that's what we've also heard in the survey responses as well, but that's, that's not a, an anomaly that, that's there as well. So some of the data around economic development, construction and healthcare and social assistance are consistently the largest industries, if you look back at the data over the last decade, and have been growing actually. And that's both in terms of the number of establishments and the number of employees in town. And you can see all of the, this, there's, there's a very rich diagram so that you could, we could look at this one for a little bit longer, but I'm just giving you a little snippet here. The tax burden on residents we saw in the survey responses and we've heard at the meetings is something that's frequently voiced among residents. The tax burden, as you can see in the pie chart on this slide, is predominantly placed on the residential real estate taxes. The average single-family tax bill compared to neighbors is a little bit higher, I would say, but not as high as the neighbor of Medfield and certainly not as high. I think some people we heard in comments in meetings were talking about Wellesley and things like that. I think the average single-family tax bill in Wellesley is somewhere around $16,000 or $17,000. So not, not getting into that range, but is potentially high compared to some of the neighbors. In terms of those priority areas that Andrea mentioned that showed up in the survey, the, really the impetus there is a strong focus on supporting small businesses, redeveloping the former industrial properties, which the town has some processes underway, of course, and developers do as well, and then increasing predictability of development and growth. And those were, just to clarify, that, that's harkening back to the survey. So that's more community-based feedback, that's based upon the survey questions and responses, not necessarily a data item for economic development. Just popping across into the land use topic, some of the, the data findings, 42% of Norfolk's land area is residential and that's primarily zoned for single-family homes. We're all very familiar with B1 zoning, the town center, and, and that is geographically at the center of town. That's where the commuter rail is and it's also where the town's trying to attract commercial and mixed uses. The Route 115 and 1A area serves as the town's largest cluster of commercial properties and includes very nearby the Southwood Hospital property, which is a major opportunity. And the, the open space resources are sort of nicely organized in a sort of compact, about half mile radius around the town center and, and potentially lend themselves to that type of connected network that we talked about in the vision statement last meeting. In terms of land use, some of the, the concerns around the type, scale and location of future growth and sort of matching that growth with future infrastructure needs, that's what we've heard quite a bit about. The town, of course, as you all know, has seen a lot of 40B development over the preceding years. And the difficulty there is that that occurs outside of these planning processes and outside of the local controls. So building on strategies, I think, around looking at how to get 40B more under the control of the town would be an item to think about. The growth patterns are, have been predominantly lower density residential, except for the 40Bs, of course. And those may present longer-term challenges for infrastructure costs, maintenance and other systems in the town. And then there are some barriers with the infrastructure overall and market support for mixed youth growth opportunities, which we've been seeing as, as an example in the town center. Harkening back to the survey for the land use, these are the, the primary challenges that were identified both for land use, economic development and housing. So again, small businesses showed up as something that residents are very interested in supporting and that I think is good news to the Small Business Association and those members we met with. Looking at those former industrial and hospital properties as a major opportunity for transformation. And then overall, increasing the predictability of development and growth. I think that's something a lot of, lot of interest and desire for. And then you can see some of the other responses as we go down this list. Looking at open space and recreation, here you see highlighted some of those open spaces, both public and private, that were identified as being sort of roughly in a concentric circle around the town center, which I think has a nice distribution for both residents and the various neighborhoods and precincts around the town. And then this map also shows town-owned property, which aren't all primarily open spaces, but may present some opportunities for thinking about where an additional smaller pocket park or open space or conservation amenity might occur to supplement the existing network. In terms of open space and recreation from the survey, people identified wanting more trails or amenities on conservation lands in particular and concern about the loss of undeveloped land and how that impacts the semi-rural character and small-town feel of the town. Regarding transportation, a lot, a lot of very interesting facts. So over 90% of the Norfolk households have at least one vehicle. However, there are 50 to 100 zero-vehicle households, which may be surprising. That's, that's a, you know, consequential number. Approximately 69% of Norfolk residents drive to work. And this is interesting, on a following slide, we have a slide which shows the data of how those patterns have changed due to COVID-19 pandemic and commuting habits. And the, over that time and related to the pandemic, Norfolk has seen a 19% increase in vehicle miles traveled or BMT, as those transportation engineers like to call it. And the town has experienced a moderate and sort of commensurate increase in vehicular crashes as well due to those increased miles on the road. And a fewer than one-third of the town's streets have sidewalks. And we have a map to show those locations as well. Residents have expressed in all of our various methods of feedback, a preference for different ways to get around town beyond driving and want to continue to work toward the adopted complete streets policy and implementation of it and the increasing local alternatives. Maybe there's some public transportation solutions that can be thought of or shuttle services, but the, the commuter rail is effectively not a local option. It's an option to go from the town to other places farther afield, of course. And the opportunity to better connect the land use decisions and those growth opportunities to the transportation network and more specifically a multimodal transportation network. Here's the very interesting chart I referenced in regard to changes in work commute modes due to the pandemic. So this is data from 2019 and 2021, which I think is the most recent data available. But you can see on the left side of this bar chart, the Norfolk 2019 and Norfolk 2021 data, you can see that the share of driving has actually decreased in almost an equal percentage, the share of WFH, which is work from home, increased. So that's something we all know very well anecdotally and from our, probably many of our own home experiences, but it's interesting to see this show up in the data in this way. That pattern has been, is there, but not as pronounced in the swap subregion, which is the, the other communities that, which are your neighbors. And then in the overall MAPC region, the greater Boston area, overall, you see that pattern as well. But again, not, not quite as pronounced as what Norfolk has experienced. Here are the pedestrian facilities on a map, which mathematically equate to about one-third of the roadway facilities in the town. Have a blue line on them, which is a sidewalk on one side or a dark blue line, which is both sides. And we, I referenced the crashes and the increase in crashes, and this is a map which shows the location of those crashes. So you can see a fair amount on the major roadways in town, 115, 1A, Main Street. You know, those, where you would expect a lot of the traffic is occurring and perhaps some of the higher speed traffic. And you can see those qualified as non-fatal with vehicles, non-fatal with the vehicle and a cyclist, which are less frequent, and then where there's property damage only, which it looks like the majority of those are. And then occasional unknown vehicle. And this is all based upon the, the police crash records and reporting. Alright, so from the survey relative to transportation, a focus on those sidewalks and better options for walking. Similarly, better options for biking through trails or bike lanes. And then overall improved roadway and infrastructure conditions for walking and biking, but also for cars as well. So really a focus on how people are getting around and you can see some of those in, in the quotes as well. In terms of historical and cultural resources, 343 historic and cultural sites have been inventoried by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. There's three national registered districts in the town and three properties with concert, or preservation restrictions. The Cultural Council distributed 7,200 in grants in the previous calendar year. And there are almost 100 jobs in the arts, entertainment and recreation sector in the town. So there, I think there's perhaps more historical and cultural activity occurring than you might first imagine in the town, and I think these, that's shown in these facts here. Across those resources, you can see here the, the MACRIS inventory, which is the Massachusetts Cultural Resources Inventory System. Maybe I might have missed on that S, but the, that's the acronym. And the dots are effectively points that have been inventoried, properties that have been inventoried for cultural or historic significance in the town. And then you can see the, the blue and red areas are the districts, which have been either our national registered district or a inventoried area. So resources are pretty well spread around. There's some concentration around some of the, around the, the town center, of course, which was a center point of activity and then around some of the previous mill locations as well and other centers of commerce historically. So here, here are some thoughts from the historical and cultural team, thinking about, you know, that pivot toward goals a little bit, but there could be some benefit from an interpretive framework, thinking about a way to structure the documentation and sharing of Norfolk's rich history and getting that more communicated, applying a more comprehensive approach to the management of these assets locally. And that the town has adopted the Community Preservation Act, so there's funding available for historic preservation, open space and affordable housing. But the use of those funds for historic preservation has been less than, than the other two Community Preservation Act priorities. And looking at ways that history and culture connect to, can connect to economic development in the town and that the cultural programming is highly valued and much of that's occurring through the Recreation Department today as well. What are the primary challenges from the survey? Stun, lack of interest in this topic is, is one of the challenges relative to the others that shows up here. And that a lack of capacity to support historic preservation projects and potentially the need for more cultural events. That's what we're seeing in those responses. Housing, lots of themes around affordability and stability. A quarter of Norfolk households are cost burdened, which means spending 30% or more of their income on housing. The share of deed restricted affordable housing is small and has, has actually shrunk from 187 units to 151. And the housing tools, which the town has been using, are actually quite good. So the town has employed tools and expanded the housing options, has an affordable housing trust, has Community Preservation Act, has adopted inclusionary zoning and is working, as you just saw in the previous presentation, towards a housing choice designation. So there, there, the town is taking action around housing, but the results are sometimes difficult. The rental options are also an issue and that's, it's not a surprise that we're seeing 96% of the survey respondents as homeowners because the amount of rental housing in the town is actually quite small. When asked about housing opportunities, survey respondents did mention some preference, a small preference focused on mixed-use development primarily in the B1 area and some interest around expanding the middle housing options. The missing middle is sometimes referenced in housing conversations, which are those smaller, multi-family scaled developments, which are between say three and eight or nine units. And then I'm just around the bend here on a couple more topics, so we're almost there. I know this has been a lot. The community facilities and services. The town relies on residents and volunteers to serve on its 22 boards and committees and we're thankful for that. The capital improvement plan of the town has listed over 18 million in project requests for FY '23 and over 89 million over the next five years. The town, to help support those activities, has and maintains a AA+ bond rating, which is good for lending rates. The town has nine public buildings that total almost 300,000 square feet and owns and maintains a vehicle fleet of 82 with an average age on that fleet of 10.7 years. The town has 90 miles of roadways, not all of them town-owned, and supports about 150 users in the IT department. It maintains two enterprise funds for water and sewer services and shares facilities between the school district and the municipality for those facilities. So a lot, a lot of various topics captured in, in this community facilities and services area. The town meeting attendance has been noted as just over 2% of registered voters. So that's, that's an area for potential improvement. The lack of external facilities assessment work has been noted and that could be a way to inform capital investments and ensure that investments are maintained over time. And accessibility of town information and physical access to facilities and public infrastructure has been noted as well as an area of potential improvement. And residents thinking about and desiring a variety of new and enhanced public services, both today and thinking out into the future as well. A, an organizational chart of the town departments and how they fit within the overall hierarchy relative to each other and also whether or not they are elected officials, a town department or a shared service or the enterprise fund I mentioned. And then relative to the survey, the responses we're seeing is that people want to continue the school investments. That's an important part of the reasons why people are happy with the community are the schools. And the continued infrastructure investments, I mentioned the roads. Also concern about the water infrastructure over time and then also the efficient use of town facilities and buildings. And then lastly, relative to, well, maybe, no, sorry, we've got two left. Second to lastly. Community health. So healthy, healthier outcomes compared to other communities in Massachusetts. I'll have a few, I'll show you a couple graphs in that regard. The Norfolk Board of Health and the Metacoma Public Health Alliance are the primary entities addressing community health issues in the town. There are limited access to medical facilities now that there are not, like the Pondville Hospital, for example, has been not in, not functioning for decades now. The youth and elderly populations are likely to face additional health challenges. But there is, in general, I would say, a limited local level of health data available. And we'll show you some of what is available. So in regard to Norfolk health outcomes, and this is data from the Metacoma Public Health Alliance. You can see the blue is the percent- You can see the blue is the prevalence of these various issues, health ailments in Norfolk versus the same prevalence in Massachusetts as overall. So you can see the items where the blue is a little higher than the gray are high cholesterol and obesity, which would be the two areas to maybe focus some concentrated effort in terms of community health. The others, the town of Norfolk is comparing favorably in terms of health outcomes there. In terms of health behaviors, the data shows a little more prevalence in both binge drinking and smoking relative to Massachusetts and nationwide. Well, I guess not nationwide, not compared for smoking nationwide, but compared to the Commonwealth. But it's doing well on physical activity and sleep patterns. So people, I think, echo what the data shows, that promoting an active lifestyle is one of the primary challenges. And mentioned youth-related health concerns, most specifically vaping, underage drinking and obesity, which does pretty directly align with what the data shows. And then some mention of concerns around septic systems and wastewater and water quality. And then finally, in terms of energy and sustainability, which I will note is a cross-cutting theme. Sustainability shows up in various ways in each of the topics, I would add. But in directly looking at these items, the town of Norfolk has a Green Community Designation, which is getting access to funding, providing access to funding for the town to make energy efficiency upgrades to facilities and things of that nature. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is recently updated in this past year. The town has also completed a municipal vulnerability preparedness and MVP resilience building report back in 2020 and has some high priority actions identified from these efforts, which we will be integrating into the master plan as well. And then in terms of energy and sustainability, just one of the figures from the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and this one shows the local flooding zones and their relationship to either highly developed areas or critical infrastructure. So I think this is something important to keep in mind, particularly as we think about climate change and the increase for high-volume rainfall events in the coming years and decades. So I will take a breath. That was a lot of stuff. But what we felt a little self-conscious about as a team is that we have known ourselves that a lot of this work has been occurring in the background, but we haven't had opportunity as much to share it with the committee. So consider this, if something's burning on your mind, we're happy to hear that now. But I think this was more intended to show the breadth and depth of the work that has been occurring in the background and offer it as a preview, where our intention is to get you the detailed write-ups and summaries for each of these topics, hitting on some of the information that I just shared in the next few weeks. And then that would give you the opportunity as a committee to take it in, review it on your own time. And then what we hope to do is use those as conversation starters and ways to really push forward the next stage, which is the setting and identifying of goals. Any burning thoughts or questions?
I know, Josh, there was a lot of comments in the chat, and I think Andrew was trying to address those. I personally don't have anything, but I would like to, you know, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but it'd be interesting if Andrew could just give us a kind of a highlight on what was in the chat and what the response was.
Yeah, I'm happy to. So there was a question about the drop in the subsidized housing inventory. The state did just release the new numbers, which is really exciting. But they've only released the number itself. So we have not been able to look at the detailed inventory. The state provides sort of two documents. One, that just gives kind of the total number of units, the total number of subsidized units, and then the percentage. That's what we've been able to see of updated numbers. We're still waiting on that detailed list that will have all of Norfolk's individual developments that are on the inventory. And so Susan was clarifying that it looks like there could be a drop, but it's not truly a drop because there are some 40B comprehensive permits that are in construction. So Josh and I can reach out to Susan and Rich to try to better understand the SHI number.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? I can't see if anybody has their hand raised on Zoom. Chris or Eric, did you have anything? Okay, we do have, Aaron has a comment here in the room.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in. I guess I'll speak for myself instead of the committee. But just really impressive, the breadth and detail in the work that Josh and Andrew and your team are doing. Thank you and keep it up.
Yeah, I think that's great, Aaron. And I feel like you almost know us better than we know ourselves. It's a little scary. So, great job.
All right, so we have, sorry, we do have one last couple items just to touch on, but we'll do them quicker than we did the last one.
Okay.
So we just wanted to give you a quick update, which I'll pass to Andrea regarding the vision statement, which is also in the works here.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. So if you recall, I think we talked about sort of the methodology to create the vision statement at the meeting in June. And so we really are emphasizing that this is kind of a work in progress, that we started with a really great 2007 vision statement. But through the forums and the survey, we're continuing to get an understanding of what the community really wants, is that big vision over the next 10, 15 years, where should Norfolk be going? And so we're taking that feedback that we've heard, I think, next slide. And we had a question that was, what is your vision for Norfolk? And that was to the point, like kind of on the nose. And people gave us a lot of good responses. But then a lot of the other survey questions are giving us good feedback for us to kind of go back and look at the vision and continue to refine it. We also asked, how close is Norfolk to the ideal vision? A similar question to what we asked in our forums. And about 40% said very close or close. Interesting that a third were neutral. I don't really know what that means, but we'll hopefully continue to understand that. And then about a quarter said not closer. A few folks said really not close. So we're continuing to kind of unpack responses like this and get a sense for what the final vision statement should be. So as we're looking through all of the feedback and meeting with you all, we're going to be continuing to refine this list of desired outcomes that we shared last time and thinking of how we can translate that into really aspirational solutions so that at the end of this process, ideally, you'll have a section of the plan that really articulates a realistic and aspirational vision that you all can work towards with the different goals and strategies that you put forth. So the other thing that we will kind of be continuing to round out is guiding principles, those kind of things that you want to keep in mind with every decision that you're making after the master plan is done. I think that a lot of these principles that we have started to tease out from the forums continue to be present in the survey. So really a big emphasis on quality of life and fiscal responsibility, sustainability, transparency. So we're going to continue to see how these manifest themselves as we continue to do engagement to refine the vision.
And just a note on that too, thank you, Andrew, that we will, our goal is to wrap this up with the topic briefs as well to give to the committee so that you have something a little more tangible in summary form that you can react to and give us any feedback. As the vision statement, we will view as sort of an organic item, which continues to get better throughout this process. We're not trying to set it in stone, but we're trying to put it out there for the committee first, but then we can put it out there more widely for the community to comment on and help us improve it over the coming months. So looking ahead to those coming months, this is our last item, I promise. So we continue to monitor through the survey responses and the meeting attendance, which where we are thinking, there may be some under-representation relative to the town's demographics. Renters, I think, is one of the items that we have noted. So we're going to think about ways to connect with the housing authority or others to really try to connect with the renters that do live in the town. Residents of color are probably still, although we did see, I think, a decent selection and sampling of residents of color in the survey. They're probably still overall undersampled in the process. People who work in the town, whether they be residents or people who are just coming to the town to work, have, I think, been less represented in this process so far. And so that might be another area for us to look into. Then as Andrea mentioned in the survey results, residents with, perhaps not, I don't know that a household around 100,000 in income or less is considered a lower income, but that's about the mark that we've been seeing, which is underrepresented, is 100,000 or less in terms of that, and people under the age of 35. So we'll be thinking of ways as we turn toward the fall to try to directly hit some of these target audiences. The other groups have been, I think, well represented in the town relative to demographics. So as I mentioned, we are at that pivot point where we've gone through the preparations for engagement. We've done a lot of engagement now. The awareness, hopefully, is pretty strong in the community of this process and the visioning. We have all the tools we need, excuse me, and the feedback we need as well. As we move toward drafting the goals, you can see we struck through. Because I think we let the survey run a little bit longer, I think we're making an adjustment where we're calling that pivot point about now, August. So then we're projecting out that this will probably run in the same fashion till about January 2024. And then the next phase will be wrapping up towards February to April for that defined priorities. But this is, I think, we're in very good shape relative to this overall timeline and tracking very nicely with the work which we have completed and which is right in front of us. The community engagement approach, we wanted to, the next phase is one where there will be way too much information to talk about almost all the time. So we need to talk about a strategy to do that with you and with the community. So it is not likely possible for us to talk about the beginning of drafting goals next meeting and cover all the topics within one meeting. So we have a question to the committee, which would be, how should we approach that? And then similarly, as we discussed with the community engagement in the fall, it's also difficult to cover all those topics in the detail that we would like to in a single community meeting. So sometimes we've done that as a series of meetings. Sometimes we give people the choice within a single meeting to pick the topics that they're very interested in so that they can choose and feel that they have the options. And sometimes we collapse those topics into themes which make sense or into multiple topics in a certain group. And that sometimes helps to be more efficient about it all, too. So we wanted to put this out here as we are formulating the approach to the fall and see if the committee had any strong opinions about that. And specifically, the question to the committee in a very practical sense is, would you all be interested in having two committees, two committee meetings in the month of September? Or does that not sound like fun to you all?
It doesn't sound like fun, but I don't think it's something we should rush either. So it's not a terrible idea.
Yeah, I second what Gary said. It's not fun, but seems like it's necessary.
I would like to depart. I think it would be fun.
Bringing games, Chris? What's your idea here?
Well, we might, maybe through Rich, we'll discuss it a little bit and see what the practical concerns are around that and if there are potentially dates which might work. But we will, it sounds like there's not strong opposition to it as an idea. So we'll consider how best to approach, being conscious of proper use of the committee's time, but also that we have a lot of information we'll be needing to cover, to effectively work through conversations with you all first before we have similar conversations with the broader community, just so that there's a comfort level with the committee about what's being discussed.
Sounds good, Josh.
All right, great. And then the other thing-
Can I jump in there? Josh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Two questions. One is, I was going to say, does every committee meeting need to be a planning board meeting? I guess it does because if you guys are together, it needs to be a public meeting, right? All right, I guess I answered my own question. The second question was, it'd be interesting to see, Josh, the timeline through the completion of the project to see if there are other months where meeting additionally might be necessary, just so we can sort of plan time through the whole schedule.
Aaron actually took a point that I was going to make as well. You have a pretty lengthy agenda for planning board meetings going into the fall. There's going to be review meetings, there's going to be town meeting prep, there's going to be proposals, site plan review. Having these meetings be on the front end of that is going to make for some pretty late nights. And I wonder if it makes sense to untether these meetings from the planning board as long as we go through the goal planning stages.
Yeah, that is a good point, Kevin. And that's something we're going to need to discuss, that maybe we peel this off as a separate meeting and, because even tonight's going to be quite lengthy. And I think you're right, every meeting moving forward through the fall is going to be the same way. So that's something we'll need to definitely take into consideration. Good point. Thank you. Might have to go biweekly, Rich.
Yeah, because we actually were thinking about having a Southwood presentation on for September. That needs time as well.
Right. And that's going to be, that'll be another long presentation as well. I mean, it's all good. It's all good. These are all exciting things that, you know, it's part of our community and making it better. So yeah, we'll have to look at that. It seems like, just forewarning your board that we may need to go biweekly for a few months here. So, and it seems like, you know, we had that pace for a while last year as well. We had several months last year where we had a second meeting every month. But anyway, won't belabor the point, but yeah.
And perhaps it's just something to consider that, you know, we have a mix in terms of, so some of the members tonight are remote and some, maybe PC is roam, maybe the master plan, maybe that could be remote, if that works better logistically for people, to be able to make it available to them in terms of scheduling and so forth.
I like that.
Might be something to consider.
Sounds good. So we'll talk about it a little bit more, Josh, and get back to you, but that sounds like the direction we'll be heading.
That sounds great. I appreciate it. And we appreciate the time. Apologize for your subsequent late meeting tonight.
No, no, it's all good, Josh. It's all good. Did you have anything else, Josh? I didn't mean to cut you off. I wasn't sure if you were wrapped up or if you had won the final.
We can, I think, accomplish the last item by email, but I'll just give a preview and warning that we're going to be asking committee members if any of you would like to volunteer to join us at the Discovery Day on September 9, which would be on Town Hill. And that's with the Small Business Association, where we would have, I think, a similar setup perhaps to what we had at the Norfolk Community Day.
Okay. Yep, that would be great.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
Thanks for being around, Josh. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Josh. Thank you, Andrew. Really appreciate it. And yeah, send us the info on the Discovery Day and we'll get back to you on. But it sounds like we need to look at peeling off the master plan to a separate meeting. And remote would probably be good as well. But we'll get back to you once we confirm that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Was there anybody else that had any comments, questions from anyone in the room or on Zoom? Great. Appreciate it. Appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Rich, before we get into the public hearing, which we have one minute, that's the door, which we have one minute. Can we do a quick bathroom break?
Sure.
Great.
Thanks.
Appreciate the thank you. All right, so we should be live. Thank you. Appreciate everybody's time. Just need a little bathroom break. So our first public hearing is 8:30. We're at 8:33, so that's 3 MacArthur Ave, and that's a continuation from the June 13th meeting. So we do not need to read that in since it's a continuation. It is the 3 MacArthur Ave Definitive Subdivision Roadway Improvement Project for One Lot. So Rich, want to give us a-
Recap.
Yeah, a quick recap.
What we'll be discussing tonight. So the board had a site visit on July 26th, walked the MacArthur Ave to take a look at the existing conditions. We went from the bottom of Lake Shore Drive all the way up to Hunter Ave to get, so to speak, a lay of land. At that meeting, intense was Blair Crane, DPW Director, who is also in the meeting room this evening, as well as Chief Kenny, the fire chief. And the points of interest to look at was the access in order for the proposed lot in terms of grading and complying with the subdivision regulations in terms of, in order to construct a single-family home. And just for a recap, MacArthur is a pre-existing private way that has been laid out by a subdivision plan that was predate subdivision control enacted in the town of Norfolk. In order for someone to, in that situation, which is this case here, in order to be able to obtain a building permit for a single-family home, it's before the planning board determine the adequacy of access for municipal services to that lot. There were a bunch of, I think, legal questions that came up during that site visit. So we do have Marissa Miller from Town Council's office online with us this evening to go over some of those questions, questions in terms of legal questions that will come up. We do have online Rick Droh for the applicant, the applicant's here in the building, Mr. Robbins in the back to my left. And I think that kind of sets the stage for the moment. Is there any particular thing you want to-
No, I think that covers the, you know, good recap of it. I know we had a really good site visit with DPW, Chief Kenny, residents, and then the applicant and the developer there. So that was good. The questions did come up regarding the legal, you know, the legal justification of this and how, you know, how it impacts the current residents there. So I think it would be good to hear from, I don't wanna, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't wanna put, state something incorrectly, but I think it'd be good to hear from Marissa about the responses to those questions.
Sure.
We can't hear you.
Hold on a second.
All right, Marissa, can you try again?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. All right, good evening. Thanks for having me. So I guess the main points that I have here are, you know, I reviewed the letter from the applicant's attorney regarding title and his rights in the way. And the case law is such that, you know, he can improve the way to reach his lot. So that's not the issue there. What the planning board's looking at is, you know, the adequacy of reaching the way, if it meets your subdivision rules and regulations, you know, even if it needed waivers, you're allowed to do that. So it's really, does this plan show sufficient access to the way that it would allow vehicles to reach the lot? So I don't know if you have any specific questions beyond that.
I know that the, so there's two points of, I guess, access that could be had. One is from, is it Lake Shore? I believe it's correct. And then the other's from Hunter. Coming in from Lake Shore would require significant regrading to get an adequate slope for emergency vehicles, and by doing that, it would, it will impact the existing homeowners that are along that private way. And so then the question comes into that is, well, how is that handled? I mean, how is that, because I personally have a hard time with, if you improve the way, but you're negatively impacting the residents along the sides that access the way.
So what is the negative impact? Is it in terms of just the construction and, you know, the annoyance of construction? Or is it that that particular means of access would require doing something in the way that might affect other people's rights in the way?
So in particular, because of the regrading of the slope, the roadway, the private way would have to be lowered, which would then make it very challenging for the one homeowner to access their driveway that's along that private way-
Okay.
-without significant modifications.
My understanding is also that through the reduction in the grade, they would have to put a retaining wall, which would preclude access to the rest of the roadway to Hunter Ave as well. So it takes away access not just from that one homeowner to their secondary driveway and home access, but also to the remaining portion of that street.
Okay, and certainly under the case law, you know, a plaintiff with an easement over the entire length of the way, it has the right to make it usable and passable, but you have to have due regard to the rights and interests of others. So if there's an alternative means to access the lot that doesn't affect other people's rights, then that's certainly something you can take into consideration.
Okay. It's understandable. So, and there is, I mean, you could come in through Hunter as an alternative, which would, I don't see any impact then to the other residents that access the way coming in from that direction.
It just becomes an access issue for emergency vehicles at that point, because there is no turnaround. They would have to create a large enough turnaround on the property itself-
Right.
-for a fire engine to turn around and then go out, because there's no way the fire engine's gonna be able to back out all the way that, from that property down Hunter.
I think that's, that's actually what I think bothers me the most about it, is Chief Kenny said he could get his truck close to that driveway, and then he would have to run a 1,000-foot hose up to that house, which is most likely going to be a delay. Obviously, if there's a fire at that house, there's other houses around it that are very close. And then if the house is sold, you know, forever, in perpetuity, this is going to be a delay. And my question is, is that then a liability for the town? Because we know, we would be, if we approved this, we would, we know that there is going to be a delay of getting hoses to the house if it's ever on fire, or we don't even know about ambulances, I don't think yet, but certainly the fire trucks.
Ambulances, but the same issue because of grade. So they have the same requirements as the fire engines, yeah.
Well, and the other, the other thing that was mentioned is, you know, if the road was to be improved, the private way was to be improved coming from Hunter, and the rest of it left going down to Lake Shore, what's to prohibit people from actually using it as a road? I mean, obviously, it could get, you could put signage up that says it's a private way, and we really have, don't have any control over that, but I would imagine some people would start to use it as a road. But I'm just mentioning that on this, a side note, I think what it really, in my mind, what it really comes down to is what Marissa, her last statement was, was if you improve that private way, accommodations have to, you can't negatively impact the other people's access to it. And so accommodations would have to be made for that. So, any other board member comments before we open it up?
I guess I am curious as to Melissa's question as far as, like, what does the town have from a term of ownership? Should we allow this through? You know, and this does get sold, if something does happen, does this put the town at risk from possibly a lawsuit if, you know, an emergency vehicle's not able to make it to the property in time?
So I'm not familiar with any situation where the town would be at liability, you know, sort of build at your own risk, but at the same time, it is something that the planning board considers and has, one of the powers of the planning board is to ensure safety from fire, flood, et cetera. So in your discretion, if you don't think that it adequately provides for that, then it doesn't meet your rules and regulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other board member comments? Okay, so let's open it up to anybody on Zoom or anyone in the room. No comments.
Can anyone hear me?
Yep, Matt, please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Matt Ferreira. I live at 30 Hunter Ave. I'm right at the end there, right next to all this mess. My dad's the one that usually deals with this, but he's unable to make the meeting, so I'm sitting in for him. I've lived here my whole life. So my concern here is that, for one, yeah, sorry, it's my dog. I, for one, agree with the stuff with the fire truck. I mean, I just don't see any situation where a fire truck coming from Lake Shore is going to be able to make it up that grade. I mean, I see Amazon trucks trying to make it up there all the time, and they make it about halfway before they have to walk 100 yards to get the packages up to us. I don't know why they get routed that way, but, I mean, I just don't see a situation where that is safe for anyone. So that's just my two cents.
So the existing grade there is not adequate for emergency vehicles, and that's where the plan that we have in front of us shows, adjusting that grade, removing, you know, lowering that slope and adjusting that grade to something that would be right at that borderline edge of being adequate, you know, just to minimize it, just to minimize the cuts there. But by doing that, it would, it would require a retaining wall blocking off an existing driveway. And so to answer your question, you're right, it's not acceptable right now, but the plan before us is to try and make it very close. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
My concern here, obviously, as the Director of Public Works, is the, beyond the slope itself, is this going to be, is the intent to be an accepted town road? Or will it be an unaccepted town road? And furthermore, there's a lot of drainage issues there as well, so, you know, is it going to be, would it be built to be an accepted road?
So I will let Rick speak for that. I think I know the answer, but I'll let him comment on that.
Good evening. Rick Droh with United Consultants. The plan would be to have the road remain as private and not petition the town for acceptance. We have provided a stormwater system, which I'm not sure, maybe Rich can speak to what the status of the peer review of that is. I think it's a little premature myself because of all of the items we're dealing with from the legal perspective of the construction and access over the roadway that was raised by the abutters and concerns of the planning board at the meeting. But I would, I just would like to say that the intent here is to bring a road that is currently a gravel road with drainage problems and approximates a 14% grade, where haring is impassable by Amazon trucks, certainly the fire department's concerns, where the road would have to be an 8% grade. We're trying to come up with a compromise to provide for safe access for that roadway section, for both the fire trucks and then access into our lot. We've heard the town's attorney, as well as the board, and their concerns with respect to the abutters driveway access. I think at this point, Mr. Robbins and myself would be best served to have a discussion with the abutters and try and come up with a compromise to address their driveway concerns.
I have a couple of questions. Lori Gindon, 73, Priscilla Ave, Director of Abutter.
Yep, go ahead.
So I just want to start as far as emergency vehicles up that roadway. I know that you're talking about grade right now, it's 14%, it's supposed to be, you want to get it down to 8%. What about the width, too, of that road? I mean, it's hard to turn a bike around on it right now if you're riding a bike. What are they gonna do about the width of the road as long as, as well as the grade? And also, there was, I know this is brought up by a neighbor to the fire chief, there was a brush fire back there last May, I believe, which was pretty inaccessible for the fire department besides the lot where they want to build on. There's also a huge lot, I know, I think when you went on the site visit, you saw that's like in this deep, deep hole. And I know one of your members just talked about the 1,000-foot fire hose. If there was to be a, you know, a fire, how are these vehicles going to access the width of the road, never mind the grade, in the shape of the way that the right-of-way is right now, as well as any fire that could go to abutting properties? now, as well as any, any fire that could go to abutting properties?
Well, I know some of that came up, and Chief Kenny will, he'll find a way to get in there to do what he needs to do, but it, it's challenging. But I'll let, I'll let Rick speak to the width. To my knowledge, it's going to be widened, and then there will be a extension of it to allow for a turnaround using the driveway.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. We had proposed 18 feet of pavement width curb to curb, and then a Cape Cod berm that would be able to handle a tire load, if you will, if two vehicles needed to pass over that. So, so the width of the outside of pavement to outside of pavement inclusive of the Cape Cod berm would be 20 feet. We did propose a turnaround basically in the shape of a T where a fire truck would be able to access up the roadway, turn into the driveway where the house would be located, and then back up with its rear going away from Lake Shore Drive, if you will, and then being able to pull forward down the hill and then accessing Lake Shore Drive from that point.
As far as it being a private road, who is agreeing to take care of the road? What about the neighbors on both sides who would, especially one neighbor who has that second driveway there? Who's going to have the liability for that road and who's going to take care of that road?
So.
I mean, do the neighbors all have to agree on it? The abutting neighbors? What if, what if one of them doesn't agree on it? What if one of them doesn't want to plow on it? One of, one of them doesn't want anyone riding their bikes down that now paved road?
Yeah, Rich, what was the, we talked about that at the site visit. I, I don't want to say the wrong thing. Who is responsible for that? Because it's private, so.
Private, the people have rights to it. The ones who are going to have to maintain it, which, so there's a couple of issues or a couple of points are raised in terms of, it's more of a legal question, in terms of access to it, precluding other people to use it. People have rights to it. They have rights to it. You can't stop them from using it. But it's not open to the public. It's, you know, it would be, the people have rights to be able to pass and repass.
So they could put a sign at the end of it that says just "private way" or "private road."
Maybe Marissa might want to touch on that a little bit, just in terms of.
I can touch on the, on the maintenance part. So with a private road, the abutters to the way who have rights in the way are responsible for maintaining it. It's not the town's responsibility to maintain it. And there are statutory provisions where, you know, if a private way needs repairs and abutters can't agree, you know, there's a way that you can petition the court to have a surveyor appointed to see what repairs need to be made and apportion it amongst the abutters to the way. But, but that's the case for any private way. So it is. It's, it's the abutters to the way that are responsible for the maintenance.
So what if the abutters don't all agree on taking care of this road? Is this, well, that's where, going to take care of it all?
That's where you would need to go to court and go through the statutory process for that. And, and that happens. That's, that's why the statute is there.
And so, Marissa, just to clarify, I'm assuming the, the abutters in question would be for just the section of the improved part of the road? Or would it be for the whole road?
It would be for the improved road. You know, if the, if the road's not constructed, anything that's improved and that people are using and driving over, that would be subject to need repair and maintenance. I'd have to see more, you know, the plans to give a, to give a more full answer on that. But, but that's how private ways work, is that those responsible for maintenance are the abutters to the way.
So what is our rights to our half of the road? Like, that's, that's like legally, like what is our, because we technically have rights to half of the road going up to the bend.
So I can't answer that question for you. I'm here to answer questions for the planning board. So not knowing the status of your title or anything like that, I really can't get into those, those types of questions. It would be, you know, fact-specific, and I just don't know all the facts around each person's.
Yeah, you'd have to consult with your own attorney.
You could retain your own attorney if you wanted.
My name is Bob Gilmore. I'm a resident of 35 years. I'm that other abutter. The gentleman across the street, I know he's been talking a lot in regards to what's going on. My concerns are, what, number one, what does this contractor, what is he obliged to do? I've been living with dust and dirt. I know it's all simple stuff, but it's a pain in the neck. And he's been doing it for the last year. And my question is, do you have three more years to build the house?
So you're talking about.
Yeah, it's a different.
Talking about 10 MacArthur. Is that right?
We're not there yet.
That, we're not there yet. Yeah. So this is, this is the public hearing for three Macarthur. So let's, let's just pause on that and we'll circle back.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. We'll circle back on that. Yep. So I think, were there any other questions we had from the board for, for the, for our town attorney? I think we got those answered. So were there any other questions on Zoom or in the room? Okay. I think we're at the point where we can close the public hearing then. If there's no other comments.
Depends.
Depends. What else do you want to?
Are you, if you feel you have enough, the board has enough information to make a decision on how you want to treat this, then you would close the public hearing and then issue a decision. But if you're, if the guidance is to consider other options, then come back, then I wouldn't close the hearing.
Good point, good point. So, yeah, because I mean, my, my recommendation would be to go back and, you know, obviously explore the other options with either coming in, you know, option, another option would be come in from Hunter and look at that. And then, and a second option would be is to, to get with the, the abutter there that impacts their driveway and, and discuss with them how to, you know, how to handle that. Those are kind of my two, two thoughts, my two alternatives. Does the board have any other?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Goodron.
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, our, our preference would be to explore those other options with the neighbors and the access to Hunter Ave at this point. We really were hoping to get past the legal questions that were raised by the abutters. We were under the understanding that the town's attorney would be here to speak about the ability for the applicant to improve the way. We've certainly heard about the concern of the retaining wall. So I think we have some work to do to discuss options with the abutters, as well as making sure that we make the fire chief satisfied with, with the proposal as well. And then come back to the board to go over the finer details, if you will.
That's fine. We did have another question here in the room. Can you get a microphone? Oh, okay, all right. Okay, yes, Rick, let's, I think that's, that's, that's the advisable way to go. Let's, let you have some time to explore those options. Is a month long enough? I mean, do you want to continue this till next meeting or do you need longer than a month?
No, I think a month would be adequate, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. So let's continue this then for the September.
12th.
12th meeting at 8:30.
That sounds fine.
Okay, let's do that.
A motion and then.
Yep. So can I get a motion to continue the public hearing for three MacArthur Avenue until September 12th at 8:30 PM?
So moved.
I get a second?
Second.
I will do a roll call vote. We'll do Chris Monfort.
Aye.
Eric Diamond.
Aye.
Gary Sullivan.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So it's unanimous. All right.
All right.
Thank you, everybody, for that. We will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We will move on to the public hearing for 134 Main Street Norfolk Donuts Incorporated. That needs to get read into the, that needs to be read into the notice.
Yeah, so this is the first hearing you'll need, Eric will need. Eric, do you have the notice with you or you want me to put it up?
I do have it.
Okay. All right, we'll let Eric read the notice and then.
He's staying.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law, Section 48, and the Norfolk zoning bylaw, Section 310, 6.9. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August 8th, 2023, 8:45 in Room 124, Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, for Dunkin' Donuts Incorporated, relative to a special permit application to allow the installation of a new outdoor digital board at 134 Main Street. The site is located in the B1 zoning district, reference assessors map 14, block 56, lot 39. Application plans available for public inspection at the town Norfolk website or in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours 9 to 6 PM, Monday through Thursday.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
So we know we have George and John Prempis online, but I can tell you that we have not heard back from the Attorney General yet in terms of whether the bylaw has been approved. So unfortunately, you're not going to be able to take any action on it this evening. You'll have to continue it to the September meeting. The deadline for the Attorney General is August 28th, so barring any extension of time, you will know for the September meeting.
Okay.
If it's passed, and then you can take testimony and go through the application and make a decision on it. So unfortunately, can't do it tonight. The thought was to have it advertised. Maybe we heard back earlier, but unfortunately, we haven't heard back from the Attorney General. So now I would just ask the board to just continue it to the 12th of September.
Okay. I mean, I will open it up if anybody's got any quick comments. I mean, but yeah, it did make sense to continue this. So seeing no comments on Zoom or in the room, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing at 134 Main Street Norfolk Dunkin' Donuts until the September 12th meeting at 8:45 PM.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Chris Monfort.
Aye.
Eric Diamond.
Aye.
Gary Sullivan.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It has passed unanimously. All right, so we will move on to the public hearing for 9 o'clock, 79 Pond Street Site Plan Modification, which is also, I believe, yes, it needs to be read into the meeting. Eric.
Let me pull that one up, sorry.
So Eric is looking that up. If you can't find it, we could have, we could read it in from here.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law, Section 48, and the Norfolk zoning bylaw, Section 310, 6 dot 11. A public hearing will be held Tuesday, August 23rd at 9 PM, Room 124, Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, relative site plan modification application for the property located at 79 Pond Street in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, Dan Sevay of G and K Collision, is proposing to construct a one-story addition to the existing auto body shop with associated parking, utility connections, and stormwater management system. The property is located in the C1 zoning district, reference assessors map 19, block 72, lot 28. The application plans are available for public inspection on the town Norfolk website or in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours 9 AM to 6 PM, Monday through Thursday.
I'm going to make one minor modification to that, getting read in, the notice read in. I think I heard you say August 23rd, and it's, tonight's meeting is actually August 8th. So I just want to make sure that gets clarified for the notice.
Correct.
Thank you, Eric. All right, so please introduce yourself and show us what you have for us this evening.
Don't need to do anything with this besides speak into it.
It's green, it's green, so it's on. Yep, you're good.
My name is Scott Melching. I'm the architect for G and K Collision. Regretfully, the owner while wishes to be here tonight. There was a death of a coworker and close personal friend in the wake was this evening, so he is not here today. I am fully authorized to speak on his behalf this evening. As I said, I'm the architect for the addition, so I've been working closely with both Building Inspector Bullock and Rich on this project for about four months now, trying to make sure we do this in the correct way that Norfolk would like us to, because I know it is not always a very straightforward project when you do these additions. So I believe we've got some good consensus among the Building Inspector and the Planning Department about what we're doing, and the owner is very excited to get going. So if you'd like me to give an overview, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, yes.
G and K Collision operates two locations. This is their primary location, formerly Rocky's Auto Body. G and K Collision is an auto body shop. Rocky's was an all-service mechanic garage. That is not what G and K does, just to be clear. Their primary collision-focused efforts, and they're moving into the kind of the electric car Tesla repair business, and they've been pushing that at their other location in Needham, and they wish to bring that to Norfolk, to their primary. To do that, they would like to expand. The expansion is twofold. There's two parts to the expansion. There's one directly on the back, which is just a simple metal building for the purpose of parking cars that they're working on inside. They want to have more cars inside. And then a small building on the back of what is the paint booth. And that is basically to create a accessible ramp to connect the front building to the rear building, because currently there are steps between their two buildings, and that does not work well for A, rolling anything, and B, anyone who would need a disability of any kind to traverse between the two. So G and K has been very open and very focused on that with me, and we are trying to make this whole thing accessible to workers. The back building will have two overhead doors. One will be on the left-hand side, as you look at the plan on the screen. The other will be on the right-hand side. The goal there is just to be able to pull cars through instead of having to back things forward and back and maneuver to get things in and out. So two new doors to the back space, and then no doors to the small addition behind the paint booth. The paint booth is going to remain just as it is. That was previously approved as part of Rocky's, and we do not plan to change that in any way. We've gone through stormwater calculations and civil drawings, which have been submitted by Spron Engineering in Newton. And they call out for a stormwater system to be built behind the addition that will handle all the additional roof drainage. And they also, they also show a correct amount of paving. When the owner, when he bought the property, got a little overzealous, and he put down a binder coat that exceeded the 60% that was allowed. And we are removing that back to, I believe it's 59 and change that we are proposing as part of the project, because we understand we went a little too far. So we're just correcting that as part of this project. The addition is shorter than the front building. It is behind and cannot be seen from the street. It'll be matched, all the materials that the current building is, it will have the same materials. It'll be painted the same colors. It'll, it wants to look like one cohesive building at the end.
And you said you'd work with Rich and Bob, so what were, I mean, did Bob have any other outstanding comments?
Well, at the first meeting, he had quite a few, and we worked hard to answer them. And we came back with a plan that we felt addressed them all. There were some lingering things at our last meeting that Rich and Bob wanted to discuss, and my understanding, Rich, is those were closed per your email to me. So I am not aware of anything outstanding with Bob.
That's correct. Let me just pop this in here. That didn't work. Trying to do two tech things in one, sorry.
Oh, you're like a one-man show over there tonight.
Yeah. Something didn't work. So that's, I'll put that back up. I was going to try to go to street view, but anyway. One of the points was in terms of there was a special permit granted for a waiver of parking some time ago. So we build a parking base off of that, and then the parking allowances, parking can be provided within a closed structure. So there was parking within the building to meet that required parking requirement. The other. The other issue was, which I want to make sure I clarify, and which Bob was completely fine, was is a special permit use that was exercised, or didn't need for an extension or anything like that in terms of permitting through the ZBA. And then the building, which I kind of knew this, but anyway, I want to confirm, Bob, the, the building is not conforming, but that's in terms of the front setback.
Correct.
The rear, it does comply, so there's no need to modify a non-conforming structure either.
Gotcha.
So those things have been addressed. The thing that's, if you will, outstanding is to get the peer review done on behalf of the board. So I received the money to be able to get that done. And so the plan from tonight is to get, pay to get the review, get this done quickly, expeditiously, so that way hopefully at your September meeting, everything is addressed so that, I know the owner is anxious to get going, so trying to get through this. It, it's, you know, it does trigger the modification, so it requires a more robust review, even though it's, it's a small-scale project, but needs to go through that process. So trying to move along as much as we can, so.
Appreciate that. Any, any need to, for Chief Kenny to get involved and?
So it did get sent out to departments. We have not heard back from any, with any comments, either negative or positive. So usually, we take that as acceptable. It does trigger the design review, so it is going to the Design Review Board.
Okay.
Because it is an addition to the building. They have, the clock is ticking for them to meet. If they don't meet and report back, then by the next meeting, that common period will have lapsed, so the board will be in position. So kind of check the boxes along the way. So hopefully, everything is, it meets, it seems like a very good project, and we want to try to.
May I bring up one issue that?
Sure.
We've been talking about. So my understanding is in 1995, when Rocky's got their site plan approval, and that is what we are modifying, is that they had the parking shown all in the rear, which is where we're proposing our parking, ironically. They actually parked, and they actually put some in the front. And I was told by Rich that that had to be approved by this group to maintain it. We're not proposing to change any of the parking that is currently in the front of the building, but I was told that had to be approved because that was a departure from the site plan that was approved in 1995. So again, the parking for my project, our project, is behind the fence where the bylaws, I believe, wish it to be. But the owner would obviously like to keep the parking in the front, because that's how he bought the building, and he likes it. And those parking spots in the front, I can promise you, because I know both his locations, will not be cars that are going to be worked on. Those are in the back. These are for visitors and staff, and unless their staff have a nice car, he even insists that they park in the back. So he's very conscious of curb appeal, so he would like to keep the parking spaces.
Okay. Appreciate you mentioning that, yep.
That's why I'm here.
No, that's, that's good to know. I mean. Yeah, I drive by there, and you're right, there's, most of the time, I never see a car parked out front, so.
Oh, that's what it is, okay.
Chris, Eric, do you guys have any comments?
No, it seems pretty straightforward in my end.
Okay. Gary, Melissa?
I agree with Chris. Seems pretty straightforward.
Yep. I agree. I think it's just a matter of getting that peer review and seeing what, what comes back on that.
And I would say, just as a business property owner, they take great care to keep the property in a relatively very nice order.
Would agree.
Yeah.
I drive by there frequently, and it, it always looks very nice.
Yeah.
Several times a day for me, and I agree.
So. So I guess with the previous hearing, we would.
So, yeah, so I guess we're looking, if there's no further comments, we will.
The public.
We will look to continue this. So we'll be looking for a motion to continue the public hearing for 79 Pond Street to the Planning Board meeting on September 12th at 9:00 p.m.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Chris Monfort.
Aye.
Eric Diamond.
Aye.
Gary Sullivan.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So it is unanimous. We will see you in a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we are done with public hearings. We are on a new business, and the first item is Tim McArthur Ave to discuss the private way improvements and construction schedule.
If you would so indulge.
Yes.
Hopefully, to, take two items out of order, perhaps.
Sure.
One is Steve Kirby's here from Vertech.
Okay.
For the fire station in terms of the Form K.
Okay.
And then Blair is here for the Medway Branch, the salt shed.
Okay.
In terms of the modification.
Both should be.
Might be spend a little bit of time on the Tim McArthur, so.
Yeah, Tim McArthur might take a few minutes, so, sure. Let's, which one do you want to start with then, Rich?
They're both deferring each other, so I don't know.
That is so nice.
Somebody step up. Come on, Steve. All right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep. So this is for the Norfolk Fire Station Project Form K2 Modification Request.
Yes.
Correct. Thank you for seeing me out of order. Appreciate it. So just, just sort of to recap, the site plan decision included condition of approval number 24, which was for essentially third-party observations based on your Form K2, which was issued with very specific items that pertain to the project. The fire station renovation is a public works-type project, which is control construction. So part of the contracts that are already in place are inspections by the architect, various engineers, civil, landscape, structural, which is not, and mechanical, but don't really pertain to your, your Form K2. And then we also have a third-party testing company that, that's been hired through, through Vertex to go through and, and, you know, monitor the, the, the construction. I mean, there's, there's a submittal process before they even deliver materials to the site. Everything gets, gets reviewed and approved, and understanding that the Form K2 was part, part of our, our approval on our decision, but, and Beta Group would be, is your, your peer group, your peer reviewer on this. But there's a cost to that, for them to do that work, and it at least appeared to us to be duplicative work, because we're going to have reports for every inspection that's done, a field observation report that will be part of the file. And, you know, we can certainly forward all those to, to Rich in his office for, for your file exclusively, where, where we may not have previously on other projects, but they're all in the project file itself. So I know there was an estimated cost of a little over $18,000 for Beta Group to do that work. So, and we're trying to be fiscally responsible by saying, you know, if, doing, doing it already, do we need to do it a second time? And that's why we're looking for that, that modification, because we, all of the, all of the reporting and the observations that you're asking for is going to be done already.
Yep. I think Kevin wants to speak up.
We can't hear you, Kevin.
Pause. Hold on one second, Kevin.
Please stand by. It's very random.
All right, try again, Kevin.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank, thank you, Planning Board, for, for hearing us out on this topic, particularly out of order. I know Steve came there in person. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there in person, but, so I think Steve summarized it really well. I think the only other thing that I'll add is, because it's control construction, the engineers will also be providing affidavits, signed affidavits at the completion of construction that state that the project was constructed in accordance with their plan. So again, another kind of layer of, of observation as these items go in, that to us, it seemed like that we might be duplicating some efforts by bringing Beta Group on to, to look at it. So we're just seeing if maybe we can have the project team and, and those disciplines that are already doing that work kind of do that instead.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would agree with what both you said. It, it does seem like duplicate work, and to be fiscally responsible, it, we should make this modification. And that's my, my two cents, my recommendation on it. Board, what do you think? Comments?
Yeah, it sounds redundant unless it's necessary for some sort of safety thing, but it doesn't seem like that's the case right now, so.
Yeah, I think this is just such a, you know, we typically don't have your services on, on our projects. So it's because of that, you know, we just went through the standard process, and, but this is such a unique project that we have hired your services for this, that now we're, we're getting into it, and we see there's some duplication here that we could eliminate.
I mean, it makes sense when you have a developer doing a subdivision. It's, it's in their interest to do the work, but you need some, someone to oversee it.
Right.
And we already have that. We have, you know, like I said, architects, engineers, us, you know, it's, it's all there already.
Yep, I agree.
I initially had lots of questions, but hearing that the engineers will sign the affidavits, I now have none.
Right.
And we can save $18,000 of tax money, which is great.
Yeah, that's right. Eric and Chris, any comments, thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with Melissa's point.
Okay, thank you. All right, so any other comments from Zoom or the room? Oh, that rhymes.
It's getting late and hot.
Yeah, well, we got to flip that switch again.
I did flip it.
It's a placebo.
So Rich, you are looking for a motion?
Yeah, a motion to modify certificate of, of action to allow for the observational inspections and affidavits that are being performed on behalf of the town Norfolk through the.
Well, that's a frickin' mouthful, I'm just saying.
All right, well, you could, you could shorten it up if you like.
You're looking, so let me, let me try this here. So you're looking for a modification to the certification to remove the, was it, to remove the independent site review hired, you know, typically hired by the planning board?
Yeah, working on behalf of the planning board.
Working on behalf of the planning board. Would that be sufficient?
That sounds good.
Okay.
So moved, if that works.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We will do a roll call vote. Chris Monfort.
Aye.
Eric Diamond.
Aye.
Gary Sullivan.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So it has passed.
All right, I would love.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a modification for the record.
Yeah.
Okay. Right to you.
Yeah, Rich will modify.
I'll draft it up.
Make it, he'll draft it up and make it really pretty. I do want to thank you, both of you, for coming and bringing this to our attention. It's, I mean, that's great that you are, because it is, it's a duplicate thing, and we could save the town a little bit of money.
Yep.
So, and I, I'll be honest, I feel like you're probably going above and beyond what, what we would be getting from Beta Group. Not saying what Beta, they do a great job, but you're on site all the time.
Exactly.
So, yeah, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for seeing us out of order.
Thank you, Kevin.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, Blair.
All right. So in discussions with Mr. Cray in terms of the, you see the, it doesn't.
Yeah, the picture was small on that, yeah, there you go.
It's a little bigger, I guess.
So this is, uh, this is for the 33 Medway Branch DPW Salt Shed, request for minor plan modification. And this is in regards to the, the wall or?
Correct.
Fence, I'm sorry, fence, not a wall, fence at the back of the property.
Yeah, when we initially went for acceptance of the project itself, there was concerns with the neighbors, with sound and with, with light from vehicles. When we initially went through that, we looked at a, at a structure that would encompass that edge of the property. It was budgeted into the project based on what the engineers thought it would take, which was in the neighborhoods of, right around $55,000. Through COVID and the acceleration of prices of steel, wood, and, and all materials, when it came time to actually build it, the price came in at just under $150,000. So taking that information to heart, I made the executive decision to, at least through last winter, to put up an earthen berm, because we wouldn't have been able to construct anything during the winter anyway with the ground frozen. And so we put up an earthen berm. I feel as though over the winter, it has functioned as, as it was designed, as it needed to. And if, if it's possible to modify the permit, it certainly will save the taxpayers $150,000.
Any complaints from a butters?
I have not had one in the last 12 months.
And the, the height of this, the height and length is, is either the same or greater than what was on the plan?
It is, actually. When you visited the site, I measured the heights to be right around 10 feet. Since added another four, and, and essentially everything I could add to it without creating a footprint so large that I'd have to start taking trees down, which would go against what we're really trying to achieve here. I don't want to take down any foliage. If I don't have to. So I was able to go up to roughly about 14 feet.
Okay. All right.
And so it's been reconstructed, and, and that's what it is there. I put a, I did put a road cone out there, which is three feet tall.
I'll show them.
Oh, I can't even.
Yeah, that road cone is three feet tall, so it kind of gives you an idea of perspective.
Hold on, I'll, you keep speaking, and then I'll.
There you go.
Well, I mean, it sounds like your, your, your temporary solution while you're waiting on prices in the winter worked out to be a good long-term solution.
I hope so.
Saved us $90,000 in cost overruns.
Right, saved us in overruns and potentially, you know, could save us another.
And this is fairly easy to maintain, you know, when you put up a steel wooden structure, everything has a shelf life. You know, this is as simple as going out with an excavator if, you know, we get a rainstorm or whatever, and, you know, it's easy to maintain, so. At the time, was a cost-effective solution to a problem, and, and I think it may have some long-term benefits here.
What materials do you already have?
Yes. Everything, everything was there. Gravel, those are all recycled wood chips that, that we put on there, so.
As someone who was adamant about the, the wood wall and the purpose of the wall and the staggering of the, the boards and everything, having, you know, an acoustic background, I just want to state that the design that you put in place is actually probably superior from a noise suppression perspective, considering the material that's been chosen. Wood, which is largely, you know, porous, so it's going to be more likely to absorb sound, and for what sound does bounce off of it is going to refract at various different angles. So it's going to be superior than the, the flat-faced boards that we would put on there. So from a, you know, echo perspective and from a sound absorption and mitigation perspective, especially with that, you know, angle similar to a pyramid, the deflection is going to be significant for the neighbors in there. And so I want to applaud you for finding a cost-effective or cost-negative solution, really, to a problem that we were trying to resolve, and I think this is an amazing move, and I fully support the, the plan modification.
Yeah, great point, Chris. Well said. Uh, any other comments from the board? Okay, so hearing any comments from anyone in the room or on Zoom? Okay, so entertain a motion for a minor site plan modification to, how specific do you want this, Rich? To remove the wall and replace with a?
Earthen berm.
Earthen berm of, of equivalent size.
Fantastic. So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We will do a roll call vote. Chris?
Absolutely in favor of aye.
Thank you. Eric?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So it is unanimous. Thank you, Blair.
Thank you for having me. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
What's left of it.
Yes, right. All right, so now, Rich, can we go back? Are we back at the top then?
We're back at the top.
Of the top of new business, yes.
Of new business, yes.
So Tim McArthur Ave to discuss private way improvements and construction schedules. So it was, this was brought to our attention. So it was, this was brought to our attention that, and I'm trying to pull it up, that, you know, construction has been stalled on that project and according to the certificate of action and covenants, the, I want to make sure I get this clear, that the private, the construction of the private way was supposed to be completed before June 30th of 2023. And so, so we just wanted to get the contractor in here to discuss what the schedule is going to be moving forward.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm here. Oh, schedule, yeah. So the project was delayed. The building permit for the house was not issued until April this year, even though the building permit for the retaining wall was issued last July. There was some inconsistency there in the basis of the issuance. I don't really want to get into all that. I didn't anticipate the delay. I didn't mean for it to happen, but it happened. We're back in there. I've mobilized resources as best I can. We're working on putting the foundation in. We're anticipating pouring the concrete walls, we hope, this Thursday. And we hope to be wrapping up all the site work within the next 30 days. So we're moving along quickly now and hope to, you know, really wrap this thing up, you know, pave it and everything this fall.
So according to the covenants, the construction of the way and the installation of the municipal services needs to be completed prior to any structures on the property. So that needs to be done first. And I know you've already started the, you had to do the retaining wall and I know you've already started the foundation. So I just want to understand what the schedule is to get that municipal way completed because that, you know, the.
Yeah, well, there's physical limitations working there because of the topography in the space. So basically, we're going to be, like I said, finishing. I've already brought the water line up. I brought the water line up last fall up the street. Had to bring the water line up the street. That was one of the requirements. That's done. If you go there, you'll see there's a fire hydrant now at the end of the street. So we've brought the water to the property. The retaining wall was finished last fall. I said, the project did go on hold over the winter time. It was a permitting issue and it didn't get resolved until April. And now we're in there, we're trying to finish up. Like I said, it'll be all done in the next 30 days with the site work. And.
So site work, does that site work include the private way and the municipal services on that private way?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, some of it's going to run a little over 30 days. I think part of the concern here too is, and part of the motivation, I think, for bringing me here tonight, if I'm not mistaken, was that there's, Richard expressed a desire for me to move the fence further back. And I think that's really what brought us all here tonight.
Well, I mean, that, that's true. That was the catalyst, was that. But then we started diving into it and, and, I mean, let's be honest, if this, if you were doing something that, if you were developing a property that probably didn't have this private way access, we probably, you probably would have gone unnoticed.
Right, that's.
But because, but again.
Well, I'd rather just address the elephant in the room.
Yeah, so I mean, because of that, we, you know, you've got this, it's, I get it. It's a challenging construction project. It's, the site you're on is extremely sloped. And I, you know, I was out there and I saw your, you know, you've had to mobilize and put equipment on this new private way because that's really the only flat area of the lot.
Exactly.
But we just, but also construction's been stalled for so long, so, and I'm not aware, Rich, what's the issue with, what was the issue with the permit? I'm not aware of that. I don't know what that.
I can give you a short explanation if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead.
I applied for the per, the permit for the retaining wall was actually issued last July. And at the time that I applied for the permit, I didn't have the plans for the house yet. And I told Jonathan Avery, I said, I'm going to be in a few weeks and apply for the permit for the house as well, rather than doing it all at once. He said, that's fine, we'll just, you know, add that to the file. And so I went in there in August and applied for the building permit for the house itself. At that point, we'd already started the wall because we had that permit in July. And a few weeks later, I got an email back from Jonathan saying, hey, it's all set. I'm just waiting for a couple of departments to sign off on it and we'll get you a permit. And then last minute, we're just about 30 days out on that, he turned around and just completely changed his mind. He says, your site plan's no good. I can't issue you a building permit for the house. I'm like, well, Jonathan, you issued me a building permit for the retaining wall. What's the difference? And he says, I'm sorry, but I talked to town council. There's an issue with your site plan. You have to go and have it all resurveyed. And then I started talking to surveys and they said, that's going to take a long time because it's a land court property and it's going to cost a lot of money. We have to go to the land court in Boston. So we basically argued about it for a few months, back and forth. And then he stopped replying to my emails. And then I realized the reason why he stopped replying is that he left. And then Bob took over the file. And then Bob, around December, issued some concerns with the engineering, which I was already aware of anyways. And so we didn't get the building permit until April. And that was never anticipated, you know, that I would have such a fight on the site plan. I mean, this site plan's been kicked around. We initially had a delay before we even started for a couple of months. We couldn't get the site plan recorded at the registry of deeds.
Yeah, I remember that.
They kept resisting. They said, hey, we can't, you know, record this the way it's written. They thought because we referenced subdivision control law in the approval, that we were creating a subdivision or we were changing the lots, so therefore they wouldn't accept it. And it took a while, Rich helped out on this, to get to the right person down there and to explain to them, you know, what happened and what we weren't doing and finally get that recorded. So that was like a delay of a couple of months right out the gate. So this thing's been hitting some really crazy delays that I never anticipated. And, you know, I wish I was done, you know, and right now I'm in there and I just want to go full speed ahead and get this done and get out of everybody's way. I know everybody's sick of looking at it. I'm sick of looking at it. And I just want to get in there and move as quickly as possible and make everybody happy.
Okay, so yeah, I'm aware of the delays that on the front end. I don't recall the delays in the middle, but I mean that.
Yeah, I mean, I can get you the emails.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
You know, if you want, but the delays were real.
No, it's a challenge, it's a challenging site. I get it, it's challenging topography and you've had some challenges with, with, just because of the issues with the lots there.
Yeah.
And so I think for me, ultimately, it's just a matter of, I mean, this, you know, we're here because this was brought to our attention, so we looked into it and it was supposed to be done by now. And so that's why we wanted to get you here to discuss what the schedule is to move forward and find out, so.
So what I need to do basically is, we had to sink the house further into the hill in elevation. It's in the same place, but it's actually been lowered a story. And because of that, we literally on the street side have a two-story concrete wall with all kinds of rebar. And that's been, what's been creating a lot of the challenges lately, especially with this rain. We poured the footings. We had to go back and dig the footings back out because of all the rain and washout before we could actually set up the boards for the wall. And we've got all kinds of rebar in there. So we're hopefully pouring the walls Thursday. We want to go right straight to the septic system because that involves moving dirt around as well. And we're still a little bit on the road at that point with the equipment. And it's the same contractor that's doing the site work in the forms is also doing the septic system. And he knows I need to move, that I need to move immediately over to the septic system and get that done because we also, we had to ship off some fill to get it out of our way to make room for the pumper trucks because they have outriggers that go way out and there's only so much level area. And so we have some fill probably coming back, not much, but a little bit. So we're hoping to get that, we're hoping to really get all that done in the next few weeks.
So you're saying, within, so within 30 days, you'll have the site done and that.
And then the fence can move back.
Right.
So that you could drive a couple of cars by us.
Okay.
And then shortly thereafter, you know, arrange to get it paved as well. All I have to do at that point is to skirt the water line across the street. I already have the, you know, the water line up to me. So all I do is bring it across MacArthur. It's already up to, I brought it all the way up to the corner of Hunter and MacArthur and it ends where the fire hydrant is, the new fire hydrant is installed.
Okay.
So it's my plan to do all of that before I actually build the house itself. I'm not, I'm not going to be dropping any lumber over there or any building materials until this is all done. That much I promise you.
So Rich.
I'm not going to like skip ahead or anything like that.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to hear.
Yeah, we're not going to skip ahead. I really want to get all this site stuff done as quickly as possible right now and get my final grades and get the site stabilized. The safety fence is going to stay, but it's literally going to move back.
Right.
So that, like, you can drive by us. You know, it's going to be, it's going to be kind of like to the other side of the road.
Right, and winter, I like what you're saying about stabilizing the site because winter will be here before you know it.
Well, we're going to have a paved one for the winter. Probably have it paved, you know, hopefully in September.
Okay, if you haven't lined up a paving crew, I would get them, they're hard to get, so find them soon. Rich, do we need, do we need to have a modification to this to adjust those dates?
Yeah, we do.
So, so you need to work with Rich because we need to, we need to get these dates updated on this covenant.
Okay.
Because, because we've missed those, so.
Yeah.
Work with Rich on that, get those updated. And then we'll definitely need to have you back here at our next, next meeting next month.
Okay, for sure. I'll definitely be back next month. Meanwhile, I'll connect with Rich within the next week and we'll get that paperwork done.
And I've kind of monopolized the conversation, so I'll let the board speak. What, what comments do you guys have? And ladies?
I'd be excluded, Melissa.
It's good to hear this, the site's not in good condition when we're up there. And stabilization would be good at any level. There's a lot of runoff there and the inaccessibility to MacArthur is understandable, but as long, yeah, 30 days, right, will hold you to that and.
Yeah, yeah, you'll be able to go by then.
Gary, Chris, I'm sorry, Eric and Chris?
Hey, you got it covered. Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely agree with Eric and, you know, holding really, really tight to that 30 days.
Okay, and I'll be back.
Okay.
Melissa? So I think, Board, if you has asked our questions, I'm going to open it up to anyone in the room or on Zoom. I know we have a couple of people here in the room. Did you guys have any, do you gentlemen have any comments, questions?
Yeah.
Can you get a microphone?
We just need a mic.
Yep.
Make sure the green light's on.
Great, just, yeah, state your name and address and.
Yes, my name is Bob Gilmore. I'm at Two Hollow Ave. I'm one of the Butters. My main concern is how long the job has been taken. Yeah, you know, we're dealing with noise and, you know, the whole nine yards. And I understand the man has to do what he has to do. But my main concern is how long does he have to do it? My other concern is, is the erosion. Everybody's talking about going down the paper road that way. My concern is on Hunter, this side, and it's completely starting to erode. There's a house down there on Grove State. And that paper road has trees that are actually angled like this and ready to go. And Mike, I know it has nothing to do with this gentleman. I'm just bringing this up as a concern. Where erosion is happening there big time. And I don't know how the gentleman's going to pitch the road or whatever. That is one concern. My other concern is because of that drop-off, is there going to be some type of barrier, like a wooden barrier that goes along with the scenery? With little scenery's there now. But, you know, I don't, I'm concerned about a car coming and just going right down.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't want a big aluminum public thing. I'm looking at something that's going to be wooden and fit into the construction area. So my, that was one of my biggest concerns. And that other one was where the paper road goes down beyond that. There's a lot of erosion and you got a lot of trees just ready to go at any time. And I'm talking 50 footers. These ain't little tiny things. So that's one of my biggest concerns. Again, I just heard what the gentleman had to say. I'm going to hold by it. I know there's been a lot going on down there, but, you know, I understand he has to do what he has to do. But I'm glad to hear he's going to do it within the timeframe he said he's going to do it.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can answer a couple of questions if you want.
Sure, yep.
I'm not sure what he's talking about with the erosion down beyond our property, but we're not really changing the overall grade of the road. The road's going to, you know, follow more or less the grade that was there before. So I don't think we're going to be contributing to that in any way. I think that's all worked out in the peer review.
Well, I disagree just a little. Because that road, you had about 25 feet before that started to go down. Now that whole thing is torn up and it's only feet. So I understand what you're saying, but token wise, before you.
I'll have to go take a look to see.
It also might.
What you're talking about, perhaps I can better address it the next meeting. I'm really not.
It also might, you know, because of the construction that's going on, the whole, you know, it's, the whole thing's just probably looks a little different than what it did prior to construction and so.
Certainly does, sir.
Yeah, I'll go take a look at what he's talking about. And as far as this other question goes, yeah, I'm putting a guardrail up there. I don't want any cars driving over the hill.
Yeah.
But I don't want an aluminum guardrail. I want something that goes along with the scenery.
I think we might do some of that, that if you look down on the wall, there's some black fencing on the wall. My original thought was to put some of that up along the front of the property to sort of shield the property, but I think we need something stronger like a guardrail. So I'm thinking the word guardrail is going to be appropriate.
Probably a very good idea because you don't want anybody just going straight and then in the house.
I don't want a guard either. I don't want a commercial.
Well, yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
So, well, wood, like, you know, the kind, like a wood one, you know, like low brown wood guardrail that's, you know, appropriate.
It fits the environment, exactly.
Yeah, that fits the environment, exactly. I don't want an ugly guardrail there.
And one other thing, you're not putting up lights or anything up in that area, are you?
Lights, there's no plan for any lights at all, no.
Good. I don't think that was on the plan.
Thank you. I just had to, I would be going right in my bedroom.
I don't recall seeing that on the plan.
No, there's no lights.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I can answer my questions. Thank you.
Yep.
No, the question was answered in the 30 days, so if it's in the 30 days, it's not a problem.
Okay.
That's the way I looked at it.
So, yeah, so work with Rich. Let's get this doc, yeah, get the document updated and then we'll get you back on the schedule for next meeting for in a month from now.
Okay.
And look, we'll be looking forward to the progress, so. Should be, should be, we should have that close to completed, not the house, but the private way and the utilities.
Things should look a lot different, a lot different.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to hearing the news.
Okay, good. Sounds good. Um, any, anything else from anybody?
I'd like to, uh, I'd like to contribute a little bit here.
Yep.
Um, so as I said, uh, I'm, uh, Matt Ferrera, um, live at, uh, Thirty Hunter Ave here. Uh, so I have a big concern with just, uh, the sheer, um, just lack of, uh, concern of safety. I mean, that gate gets left open almost every day and, uh, I mean, there are kids that live in this neighborhood. They are always playing down here and God forbid they go play on a truck or they, or they decide to go sliding down that hill and they go into one of these fifty-foot tall forms that you got going on now. Um, along with that, um, just the end where it butts off, um, that, that dirt road that everybody's talking about possibly, uh, fixing, I don't know. Um, there are just holes in the fence there that people can jump over as well. Um, not to mention, I see people working over there without hard hats and all this stuff. I have ten years' construction experience and, uh, it just, all of that stuff concerns me greatly.
Okay. Um, so Franz, could you take a look at the, that security around the site and just, I guess, remind your crews to keep the gate closed?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be up there tomorrow to make sure they're closing it and take a look at things.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you, you put it, you put those fences up so long ago that it's probably time to take, revisit and just make sure everything, the site's.
They didn't move around a lot too during construction by the people and, um, they don't have.
It's also, it's just, the, the, the people that are working there are just completely leaving them open and unlocked. I mean, it's, it's not a problem with the structure of fence. It, it's just, it's just laziness is on.
I'll unlock it. I'll have them lock it.
Okay, appreciate that.
That's a good comment.
Yeah, great comment, Matt. Thank you. Appreciate you looking into it, Franz. Yep.
Okay, I will.
So when is that fence gonna be actually moved?
Within thirty days. Within thirty days, yeah.
Quick question, what happens if it doesn't?
Well, we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Okay.
Well, it was supposed to be done two weeks ago.
Yeah, it was, but, um, but we're, we're here tonight, we're here tonight and, um, you know, we have, we have a commitment that, you know, within thirty days, we'll, we should see dramatic improvements and that should be done and the fence should get moved back and, and then, you know, then, then he's still gotta build the house, right? So he's gotta keep the site secure to build the house, but the fence should be moved back, so. Yep, yep. All right, any other comments? Okay, great. I appreciate everybody's time, appreciate everybody's cooperation, and we'll look forward to seeing everybody in thirty days. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Yep.
Good night.
Night. All right, next item is seventeen Pine, Site Plan Modification. Discussion continued from July.
So did you get an email from Dennis Poisson, who was the contractor working with, uh, the property owners that wanted? Not ready to discuss tonight, they wanted to come in September.
Okay.
They didn't have everything in order.
Okay.
So I just wanna relay that to the board.
Great.
Uh, along with they are looking to move to the rear of the building and just rent the, that space up front for retail.
Okay.
Along that, not a rush.
Parking?
Yeah, there's not the parking that's there.
Okay.
Did you do anything to clean up that lot yet?
Oh, they have done some work. It's mow it. It's gonna take a little bit of time to get in a consistent, regular maintenance of the lawn to get it back to a lawn.
So like the ice cream shop moving to the back?
Mm-hmm.
Do we still have to be concerned about the, uh, what was the, um, the cement poured out front?
Yeah, that has to be modified back, yeah. So that, that's part of that.
Gotcha.
They need to take care of that as well.
And there's a lot of, there's quite a bit of parking in the back, so that should be, oh, and.
It's not a bad idea. I think we actually may have pitched that as an idea last time.
That's originally where it started, a year and a half ago. And then went to the front, now it's going to the back to the back, but.
Okay.
Um, along with this, they, I asked them to provide an update in terms of going through the building, in terms of all the leased spaces and, and know what, in terms of the restaurant, I don't know how many seats, you know, I know the, it was, it was parked at retail office, but I, I need to get an update in terms of seating. And so they might have to, they might very well need to remove some of the tables that are outside dining. To bring in compliance with the parking.
Yeah.
Requirements.
Good point.
To get moving. They could always come back, they can always, you know, you know, come back to the board to demonstrate that there's adequate parking and they can get a waiver, you know, reduction from the board, but to kind of move this forward.
Yep.
They need to bring in compliance with the bylaw, so they're gonna be, uh, that's one of the things.
So they'll be, they'll be.
They'll be back.
Back next month.
Yeah, so you're, got a busy September.
Yep.
Twelve.
All right, uh, fifteen Lincoln Road, next grid.
Haven't heard from them, so, um, gonna have to go out and see what's going on.
So they're.
It's just kind of, that's a heads up that's on there.
Yeah, it expires, uh, five days after our next meeting, so kinda need to know what they're doing.
We need to hear, we need a solid update.
Yep.
The next meeting.
Yep, okay. Seven Shire Drive.
So that one's done?
Yep.
Really just for your informational purposes.
Excellent.
Um, thirty-seven dash forty-three, I know there was a little bit of time spent on that A and R plan.
Mm-hmm.
Last time, I think we've covered the issues in terms of zoning, but there are land court plans. There was a era, one of the plans that the land court picked up.
Oh.
So they, they need to have it re-endorsed.
Yep.
By the planning board, so that's why it's before you tonight.
So we just need to.
Just to sign it.
Cause it was a correction from, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Minutes?
Minutes.
Seven eleven.
So we got the June, July eleventh minutes, um. Eric, did you, did anybody, or I'm hoping everybody submitted. I wasn't at the meeting, so I, I will abstain, but, um, did we get those updates, any updates to Betsy for modifications if needed?
Fine to me.
Okay.
I made a motion to.
Concerns of the meeting minutes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Make a motion for the meeting minutes for July eleventh, as stated, as printed.
So we got it so moved. Do we have a second? Did I miss that?
Second.
Okay, um, so we'll do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And I will abstain since I wasn't there at the meeting, so that is passed.
Great.
All right, Town Planner, Updates.
So when you get time, stop by, Eric, sign the minutes, got the book. Um, couple administrative things. I have, uh, distribution for each one of you, the anti-discrimination, anti-arrestment, including sexual harassment policy acknowledgement form.
Wonderful.
Each one of you need to sign that. Um, then I have the document to submit to the registered Ds with your signatures on it. We have to do that on a annual basis.
Okay.
That's a little administrative work. Um, going towards the, um, I have the update on the wastewater master plan, looking at October to do. The update, um, I think that's probably still a.
Okay.
Fair.
Cause September, Southwood update.
Yes, cause September will be Southwood. In terms of Southwood update, um, so Howard Stein Hudson's gonna, so Howard Stein Hudson did traffic counts in the area and they put together transportation impact study. So they're gonna present their findings in terms of assessment in the Palmville area for the meeting on September twelfth, which kinda plays into a little bit of the earlier discussion with the master plan.
Yeah. So the Southwood update is from.
That's from.
M A P C.
M A P C.
Not from the developer.
Correct, from M A P C.
Right.
Going through the different redevelopment scenarios, the, you know, the findings I've.
Right.
Look at that feasibility issues that.
Right.
Were looked into. Um, so you haven't had a presentation on that yet.
No.
And then to couple with it is the traffic because traffic impact is kind of associated, so we've coupled them together. Well, I think you wanna give it a fair amount of time to that.
Mm-hmm. And when, when do we, when do we gonna get an update from the developer?
Yeah.
We haven't heard from them in a while. I mean, they should be invited, I mean.
Yeah, they're invited, oh, yeah.
They're invited to any of our planning board meetings, but we should, you should, if you haven't already.
They're, I'm visiting contact with them.
Yeah, okay.
So they're aware to come to the September meeting.
Okay, great.
Um, so they're, they are aware of that.
Okay.
Um, but in terms of maybe the master plan, discuss maybe a special meeting for that and just have that a separate date in September?
Yes.
You already got a quickness.
I, I think that all the discussion about peeling off the master plan as a separate meeting, each, really pretty much each month moving forward, probably is a good idea. So it's, it does add a second meeting for us in the month, but that meeting should be, we should try and keep it limited to just the master plan and not, and not anything else unless it's an emergency.
Right.
But if, if all, everybody's, seemed like we were all kind of in agreement and heading that way based upon our collective discussions. And then Kevin threw in his two cents too, which was much appreciated to help us, guide us to this alternative.
Yeah, um, do we think we want to do, I mean, it's nice to have Josh and Andrea and the team here, but each time they have to drive down here and, you know, so do we think we should just do a Zoom for the second meeting?
I like that idea, yeah. Especially if we're doing a second meeting, yeah, it's, it's a lot to ask for all of us to be here and I think that, if anything, that meeting could be done by Zoom.
Mm-hmm, unless it's a big, important one where we wanna get people together.
Yeah, if we need meaningful interactions between people, let's have it in-house, but if it's just a status update or kinda going through results of a survey, etc., just do it from Zoom.
I'm, I'm all on board with that.
Yeah.
Plus I have humidity control in my house.
Yeah.
We could hold the meeting in my basement. It's nice and cold down there.
My hair would look much nicer without this humidity.
So, um, yeah, Rich, I think that sounds like we're all kind of in agreement. Second meeting, a month, just Zoom.
On a Tuesday? We stick with Tuesday schedules?
Probably on a Tuesday.
Um.
All right, it up to, I guess, you need to look at the schedule and.
Yeah, so select board's the first and third Tuesday, so.
Right, so we'd have to be second and fourth?
Second, fourth, I mean, you could do the fourth.
Do you, I mean, I don't want you to commit to it unless there's any other conflicts, because there's a lot of meetings.
Right.
We have a lot of boards in this town.
Twenty-two.
Yes, twenty-two.
Yeah, so let me just double check, but I think, I think this, the fourth Tuesday of the month is not something that's taken up by anybody.
Okay.
So we'll canvas around and see, so tend to believe says September twenty-sixth unless anybody has, um, issues with the twenty-sixth.
All right.
Well, hopefully nobody has issues, but.
Sounds good.
Nope, I don't.
All right.
Excellent. Um, so I'm having a little.
So any bylaw amendments?
Yeah, so I'm having, yes.
We have two, right?
We have two.
And one's like already written and done and.
Yeah, so I did get to the bottom of it, so to speak, on the, on the parking. So it kind of escaped me, what, what was the issue, but in terms of modifying the parking requirements for the special permit, we, the board had worked on that, put it on the warrant, the same warrant when we did the recodification.
Mm-hmm.
And when it was on the warrant, it was under the old sections of the zoning bylaw. It wasn't under the new sections.
Hmm.
So what those changes amount to is to put it into the context of our new recodified zoning bylaw.
Right.
For the substantive, there's not really any changes, but we, the board didn't hold up. There was not a public hearing on it. This is zoning bylaw change technically, so that's, that's the purpose to have, hold a hearing and put that on for November.
Okay.
So that one, I would more or less consider a housekeeping.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good way to put it. It's a housekeeping. It's something that was approved, but we didn't have the public hearing and it was on, it got all goofed up with the recodification, so we just gotta circle back and make it right.
Clean it up, correct.
Okay, but it, it, the language, you, you already have all the language.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, it's all.
So that's, so it's not like we gotta build it. It's done. It's, now we gotta hold, so we gotta hold a public hearing on it, so when we, when do we wanna do that? September?
I would reckon, uh.
I mean, we gotta do it.
We could do it, well, you could do it October if you want. That's enough time. Or you could do September.
I mean. Why not?
Do September twelfth?
Why not? It, it shouldn't.
We could.
It, again, it should be a house, should be a housekeeping issue, so it shouldn't be a lengthy.
Correct.
Shouldn't be lengthy and then we can get it done, get it off to, you know.
Get off to advisory.
Yeah, get it off to select board advisory so they can opine on it and, and go from there. Okay?
Yeah.
Now the second.
So for tonight, so, yeah, they'll, I'll, I'll come back. We'll go to the second one.
No, 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 finish the first one.
I was gonna say, so I'll need a vote to recommend to put it on the warrant because the warrant is open, so that way on behalf of the planning board, I'll send it to the select board.
Okay.
And then in turn, they'll send it back to you and then we can schedule the hearing for September.
You need a, you need a motion to.
Yes, to send that.
To send the parking amendment, do you, do you, do you want specific language here? You probably do.
Yeah.
Section three-ten, six dot seven each.
Do you, okay, you make the motion, you got it.
Okay, I make a motion to clean up section three-ten dash six point seven H, which is our parking area bylaw. What else am I missing?
Um, well, it's a motion to submit that to.
Select board.
To the select board, um, for the special town meeting.
Okay, so I make a motion to submit section three-ten dash six point seven H to the select board, uh, to be put on the fall special.
Town meeting warrant.
Yeah, the town, the special town meeting warrant for the fall.
Okay, so do we have a second?
Second.
We do have a second. We will do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right, Rich, there's the first one.
Yeah, I'm having some technical issues trying to pull down the language to display it, but so the second zoning, um, amendments are a few, they're wrapped up, so I spoken to the board back at the July meeting to try to tackle the, the flexibility in terms of setback for accessory buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And after the discussion from the, you know, getting the feedback from the planning board and thinking it through, went more or less back to the drawing board in terms of putting accessory buildings setbacks in the dimensional table. So right now they're in their own separate section. I wish I could, you have it in front of you, hopefully, so I can't download it for some reason.
So it's the dimensional special permit revised version three, is that what you're talking about, that, that document?
So it would, it would bring that into the dimensional table and then add a new provision, which would be the special permit provision through the ZBA to seek, to vary the setbacks for side rear, the setback, the side rear, the front setbacks for accessory buildings.
Okay, so we have a red line copy.
Yeah, hopefully if you just select it all, it should show you the final line.
But we have two, we have two copies.
So that's one piece of it. And then I had presented about really co-mingled principal structures, like existing homes that are non-conforming.
Mm-hmm.
Into that one, so I pulled it apart. So after the plan board meeting, I spoke to the ZBA and the ZBA, what they would like to see, which is in that draft language, is if you have a non-conforming structure and you're not increasing that non-conformity, um, that you could do that by right. So right now, if you have, if you're adding addition and you comply with setbacks, it's a matter of right. But if you were gonna extend along that line, but no, you weren't encroaching any closer along that non-conforming setback, they want to be able to allow people to do it by right. So they've had people who were remodeling their home, they're putting on a new, they're taking the vest wheel down from the house.
Right.
And putting a new one up.
Right.
And they gotta go through a special permit. It's not any closer to the front, but they gotta go.
They didn't change it.
Oh, yeah, that's not.
Right.
So they wanna be able to let people do that by right. The third, I call the additional piece to that is in situations where non-conforming structure, you wanna increase, you know, you wanna go closer, but do it through a findings process, so it's not a variance, you know, so you take into consideration the existing neighborhood, the structures in the, still hold public hearing, people come in, and the ZBA can grant a special permit.
Yeah.
To do that. Um, and that would address, because we are an older, in terms of houses in town and so forth, it's settled, an old town. There are situations where people like to be able to do that and they're stuck where they end up needing a variance. Well, give them the flexibility in terms of having a special permit. It's also come into play, we've had, there's been people who have now settled in year-round, the, the homes that have been around the ponds and lakes, that have been converted out to year residences, they want to, you know, add on and so forth. Their only pathway is a variance, which really is not really the correct path. It really, you know.
I get you.
They don't really meet, technically meet the statutory requirements. The ZBA's been granted, but in all fairness, it's, they're trying to work with the residents. So that's the additional piece to that. So the thought was to try to bring that before town meeting in the fall. If that's too, too much, we could at least start the conversation now and then kinda get feedback and bring it to spring. But anyway, that's something that.
Yeah.
Is also.
Right.
On the table.
So I think for tonight, it's more, on this one, it's more informational. Let us review it and then let's discuss it at our next meeting.
So I would say for tonight, if you wanna, if you wanna consider it, you need to at least put it in the, in the hopper.
Oh, I get you.
You know, to the select board for the warrant.
Right.
You could pull it back. I'm just, you know.
Okay, so the safe, the safe.
Warrant, I'm sorry, I should add, my apologies. The warrant closes September seventh.
So.
It's gonna close.
So warrant closes before our next meeting. So if we want to play this safe, we should put it on the warrant, because we could always withdraw it if we don't feel we're ready for it. So I think that's a good approach, I think we should put it up there, but I don't want to make any other decisions on it tonight.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I want to spend a little bit more time to review it and discuss it at our next meeting. And then if we, let's just say we discuss it at the next meeting, we could then still have time then in October to do the public hearing.
You would, yeah.
So does that seem to make sense with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. So we are looking for a motion to, entertaining a motion to put the article, well, it's really multiple articles, but the dimensional special permit revisions as presented in, I guess it's what, three articles? Four?
Yeah, it's probably three or four.
As written in four articles to the warrant for the fall town meeting of 2023.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we now have these two requested to go on the warrant. The one should be pretty straightforward. This one needs a little, I think it just needs more time for us to review. I don't think there's a whole lot of work that we need to do on it, per se.
It's really more understanding and get the context of it, what it means and so.
Yeah, it's not a heavy lift like it was with the signs and the use table. But I'm glad we got through those, those were good.
In terms of what you have before you, I've pre-reviewed it with town council and Bob Bullock and so they gave me some feedback and actually between the planning board and Bob's feedback, I'm like first version. I scrapped it and went with this version.
Okay.
So, which I think is cleaner.
Okay.
And it makes perfect sense to do that. I mean, it's, you know, not having people go through the ZBA, it's not filling up their calendar with things that are just kind of a rubber stamp for the most part. And then better for the homeowners to not have to go through that process and wait for the next meeting or the one after that.
Yeah, between June, July and August, we probably have three or four of these applications where-
Yeah.
You know, it's literally like, oh geez, I gotta do that?
Yep. I wasn't aware that that was happening, so it's good that we're, as a town, addressing it.
Yeah, lake neighborhoods are usually non-conforming, at least in the towns around here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good point. Any other bylaws for fall?
No, that's it.
And sign changes? We need to get this first one approved by the AG.
I know, I was saying to Gary-
Before we do anything else.
I still need to finalize the document that I created a draft of and then I'll send it to all you guys and then we'll just have to see if I can have the images in there with the, I can say photo credit or whatever. We just need to follow up with you and we'll figure it out with the lawyers.
We should hear back by the end of August on the nature center from the Attorney General.
Oh, good.
So that's what I've been told, so.
Okay, good to know.
That's going on a year and four months now.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
All right, any other updates, Rich?
That's it.
Okay, so schedules on here as printed, plus we're looking at adding the fourth Tuesday of the month just for a Zoom master plan. Get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Good night.